All right, we are live enrolling. Mr. Mayor, the floor is yours.
Great, thank you. Good evening. It is Wednesday, May 25th, 5:31 PM. This is a special City Council continuation of a meeting that we started last evening to review our budget. This meeting is being held via teleconference pursuant to Assembly Bill Number 361 in Government Code Section 54953, and it will be continued telephonically through Zoom. Ways to participate, watch and submit public comment for the meeting will be provided when public comment is opened up. That information will be presented on the screen. You can also go to the city website and look for the City Council Agenda, and it's contained on the first page of tonight's agenda as well. Again, as I said, this is a continuation of yesterday's budget meeting at 3:30 PM. We're here to consider items number two and three this evening. And City Council, let me go ahead and ask the clerk to establish a quorum, and I'll give some instructions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Addis?
Here.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
Councilmember Heller?
Here.
Councilmember Barton?
Here.
And Mayor Heding?
Present. So we do have a quorum. I'll call the meeting to order. For item number two, our fiscal year 2223 Capital Improvement Project Budget Overview and WRF Program Quarterly Three Fiscal Year Impact and Quarterly Report. I'll divide that into two because there's a lot of information, so I'll ask for council questions after the Capital Improvement General Overview is done. And then when the WRF portion is presented, I'll ask for questions on the WRF specifically. And when our questions are completed, I'll go ahead and open up public comment on both of those items. And then we'll do item three, the Harbor Department Budget Global Review, followed by Q and A, and again, we'll have another opportunity for public comment at that time. So hopefully that works for you all. And with that, good evening and welcome. And this is a recommendation to receive the proposed fiscal year 2223 Capital Improvement Project Budget and the fiscal year 22 WRF Quarter Three Report and provide feedback prior to budget adoption, much as we did last evening, scheduled in June 20 of 22. That is, the adoption of the budget will be at the June meeting of 2022. And with that, we have a number of folks on the list, but I think either Mr. Collins or Mr. Qualick might begin this evening. So I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, community members, staff. Pleased to present with Greg Qualick.
Recording in progress.
Public Works Director Greg Qualick, the CIP Budget for fiscal year 2223. Greg will run a slide presentation that will also include the, as the mayor mentioned, the Wharf Quarterly Report or Water Reclamation Facility Report, which will be provided by Paul Miko, the Water Reclamation Facility Program Manager. I just wanted to offer a few themes before turning it over to Mr. Qualick. We are pleased to be able to be, again, investing in a broad array of capital improvement projects to help improve our quality of life and the built environment that we all enjoy. It's really important to thank at the outset our community members who supported Measure E in November of 2020, which allows us to invest another $2 million into our capital improvements, which are desperately needed. We're also pleased to have more capacity to actually implement projects that was severely impacted during COVID-19, where we didn't have a Public Works Director position, and we were down an engineering position. Now we're being able to fill both of those positions and also have added capacity on the consulting side. We're far better able to implement projects. And while we're pleased with our ability to move forward on some of these investments, we do have significant headwinds that not only Morro Bay, but all cities are experiencing in the form of intense inflation. The California Construction Cost Index from April this year compared to April of last year is a 24.5% increase in construction costs, so that does hamper our ability to deliver projects. And last, the Wharf and One Water Projects. The Wharf is the most important public works project we will bring to fruition and in generation. It's not without its challenges, of course, but there are also some positives with regard to our ability to finance the project and seek grant opportunities, which Greg and team will collaborate on throughout the presentation. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Greg Qualick, our Public Works Director. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott, and thank you, Mayor and Council. Pleased to present this presentation tonight about the capital budget. So let me just share my screen. Okay, I believe you can all see that. Okay, thank you. So.
Looks good, yeah.
I'm going to, thank you. I'll keep this at a high level. And if I'm going too fast, or if there's more information needed, as the mayor said, I'll be taking some pauses to take council questions. So outline of the presentation for tonight, we'll be doing a capital project overview. We'll be doing an overview of our pavement management, as well as an overview of One Water Plan and projects. Then we'll go through our Wharf Quarterly Report, which will be delivered by Corolo. And Corolo will also have a discussion about this year's budget request for the Wharf Program. And then I will cap it out with the capital funding discussion at the end. So capital projects overview. In my opinion, a very robust investment in a city infrastructure of $18.7 million. We put these projects into a few buckets that you see here. So city streets, safety and improvements, ADA and miscellaneous projects, assessment of capital needs, vehicles and equipment, capital purchases, One Water Projects in the Wharf, and then a harbor project. So just kind of very high level. We have a pretty big pavement management program request this coming year. We're doing a speed survey and a local roadway safety plan. ADA, we're looking at improvements at Quintana Road and Main Street, as well as improvements at Lila Kaiser Park. The police department has a license plate reader system that they'd like to purchase, and we do need some more money for the EV charging stations as matching funds towards the APCD grant for chargers at the Embarcadero. That's not a new project, just a new request for that project. We are looking at doing a $400,000 citywide capital and facilities planning assessment. That does include an assessment of the harbor's needs as well, as well as our first One Water Plan updates, which would be done later in the fiscal year, because that should be done at around year five. And right now, we're at three and a half, so we want to have that plan done at year five. So we'd like to request those funds now. Some vehicle and equipment replacements. Just I'll point out the Morro Bay Transit Vehicle, in case anyone was interested. I know the council has a climate action goal. This is not an electric bus, but this is a grant-funded purchase. We can no longer purchase gas or diesel-powered buses after, I believe, 2026. So the city currently has grant money to set up an electrification plan for our transit vehicles, and that's going to help us understand what kind of facility upgrades we need so that we can set up chargers for these vehicles. And that's going to take a year or two to do, so we wouldn't be ready to get an electric bus at this time. Also, there's three police and one maintenance vehicle budgeted in non-capital funds. Just wanted to point that out. They're not included. If you look in your budget book at the capital request, those vehicles are not included there. We have One Water Projects. I'm going to go into these in a bit of detail. And then at a later point in the presentation, and then, of course, the Wharf Program, $12.4 million request for really all three components of the project that Corolo will go into some detail on later in the presentation. And then finally, we have a $210,000 request from Harbor for planning for boat launch ramp and float replacement. Harbor did try to get this project off the ground a few years ago. Didn't work out as they planned. There were some strings attached to their funding. So the goal here is for Harbor to really get this project to design so that they have a shovel-ready project with which they can apply for grants. I wanted to spend a little bit of time talking about stages of a capital project. I get a lot of requests like, or questions like, you know, why aren't we constructing anything? And where are we at with projects? So I do like to kind of give this primer. Capital projects have stages, so just because the City Council is budgeting 21 or 22 capital projects this year, and the city has already several carryover projects, it doesn't mean they'll all necessarily be constructed in the coming fiscal year. So oftentimes, what, you know, or ideally is, we would have a long-range plan in place that would help us prioritize capital projects. So the long-range planning is really important stage of a capital project, but we don't always have that. And many of our projects, in fact, don't have that outside of the One Water Plan. But once it comes to the individual project, there is this P, A, E, and D phase. That's project approval and environmental determination. Phase of a capital project could take many years. As an example, the 141 Intersection Improvements Project, this phase, we are still in this phase after, I believe, three or four years. So sometimes this can be complex and just take a lot of time. So staff is oftentimes in coordination with consultants in this phase and getting the work done and pushing it through, but it does take time. The next phase of a capital project is the design phase, and that's where the product is, the plans, specifications, and estimates, often referred to as PS and E. Again, this can take a long time. It can take three months or even three weeks. If the design is simple, it could take a year or more. Again, in the case of the 141 Intersection Improvements, we're expecting that project to have about a one-year timeframe just for design, and we're not quite in that phase yet. And then, of course, the one everyone knows is the construction phase, which, you know, we're including inspection as part of that. But that can take, you know, years. It can take six months. It just really depends on the project. So we have several projects that are in the hopper and that are in progress, that are in various stages of this. And I just want to apologize because I don't think I've done a good job of communicating that to the public and the City Council. And recently, we've begun giving the P-WAB updates on capital project status. And that's something that we'd like to periodically bring to City Council as well, just so members of the council, as well as members of the public, understand the work that the Engineering Division is doing. You know, if I were in City Council shoes, I'd want to know, does the Public Works Department have the capacity to implement these capital projects? So I want to just give a brief overview of that. Right now, we have four employees in the Engineering Division. We have the city engineer, who's pretty new, started in March, but has shown himself to be an outstanding results-driven engineer, who's an excellent project manager. We're really excited to have him on board. We have an associate engineer, who is not new, but who has recently been promoted into a new role. And she is focusing on project management and grants. But she still does a lot of the front-counter work that she used to do, which is very, very time-consuming. And she is training our engineering tech to begin taking that work over. So that's encroachment permits and development reviews. So eventually, as this individual gets trained up, the associate engineer can take on some of that project management. We're also training a public works inspector. That's not a new position. That's sort of a crossover position with our maintenance division. This is kind of an innovative thing that we're trying out. The city traditionally hasn't had inspectors. If engineers had time, they'd run out and take a look at the work that was being done. But we'd like to be a bit more proactive and comprehensive than that. And so we're training up someone to become an inspector, and it's just a really exciting thing that we are doing now. And then finally, as City Manager Collins mentioned, we do have consultants at our disposal. We work with several consultants. Cannon is one that you may see on a lot of our documents. They help us with project management at times. Dan Heimel of Confluence Engineering is helping us with the Wharf Program, as is Corolo, the project management team. We also have Jeff Van Den Eyckhoff Design that is helping us with our development reviews as well. So with all of that kind of in place, you know, I'm confident that we are going to be able to make strong headway on projects and that we are going to close out some projects this coming fiscal year. So that is the capital projects overview. Mayor, would you like to take questions now?
Yes, and then you're going to go into the WRF portion on that.
I do have a pavement management section that's about four slides.
Why don't you do that, and then we'll just separate out the WRF?
Okay.
Great, thank you.
No problem. So pavement management. No secret, we have significant challenges to pavement management here in the city of Morro Bay. And the number one reason for that is that the roads are structurally deficient. Not all of them, but many of them are, particularly in North Morro Bay. Our streets lack base and proper subgrade. They're below standard asphalt thickness, and what that means is when we try to maintain them, sometimes we're digging out and fixing them, and we're literally hitting dirt. And to maintain them, you know, it's not always a great solution to just put more asphalt on dirt. I mean, really, these roads would need to be reconstructed, which is extremely expensive and at this time, cost prohibitive. Further, streets here in Morro Bay predate a storm drain system. Some of our streets do have storm drains. Many, if not most, do not. And that means that the road surface of a street, as is the case here, serves as the conduit for water. And the water travels over. It takes the fines off of the asphalt and exposes the aggregate and breaks down, and then the street fails. And what we see there is a premature degradation of our streets because of that. So fixing this issue will require substantial investment in pavement management. I wanted to give an idea, though, that the city has been at work for the past 11 years, at least that I can find records for, of preservation projects for our streets. I'm not going to go into this in detail, but I do want to show that we have this document available. If anyone's curious in Morro Bay, when their street did receive a treatment or a preservation project, we do have this data. This is North Morro Bay. You can see some streets didn't receive anything in the past 11 years, I believe. That's not Greenwood. That's Hemlock. And then in South Morro Bay, too, many treatments have been done over the past 11 years. So and then moving on, we are now seeing increased investment in street management, in pavement management. So in the current fiscal year that we're in, we have a $1.1 million project that's currently in design. We hope to take that out to bid this summer. That project has had delays for reasons that, you know, I can go into if anyone's interested. And then we are requesting for fiscal year 2223 a new $1.7 million to continue the pavement management program. And this, by the way, is largely supported by Q and E. So this current fiscal year, I believe, $850,000 is coming out of Measure Q, and the majority of it, I believe, around $1.3 million for the proposal for next fiscal year is coming out of Q and E. Just as a note, we recently did a study that showed that if we wanted to keep our pavement condition as it is now, which again is not great, but if we wanted to just maintain that position, we would need an investment of about $2 million a year. So we are starting to get close this upcoming fiscal year on that. Our previous projects were between $500,000 and $1 million per year. So we are seeing renewed investment in that. And this goes into One Water. Would you like me to keep going there?
Will that be part of the WRF portion of it, or?
Not quite.
Okay, so you want to do One Water then? Okay, that'd be great.
Can do. Thank you. So One Water, would like to give an overview again. Some of this stuff you've all seen before, so I'm not going to read every bullet here. But I do want to, again, mention that this plan was written in 2018, so that's three and a half years ago. And we should be doing them every five to seven years. They help us, again, the One Water Plan helps us to identify capital projects for water, wastewater, and storm water. In the past, we had prior plans, prior to 2018. We had a Water Master Plan that came out in 1997, a wastewater master plan that came out in '06, and a storm drainage master plan that came out in '87. So the One Water Plan, when it came out, was big news. It consolidated all the plans, but more importantly, it transitioned the city away from the "if it ain't broke, don't fix it" mindset. This is a proactive plan based on extensive modeling that helps us understand where the deficiencies are in our systems so that we can prioritize our projects. So just in its existence, we have a plan and we have direction to get moving on these critical projects. I'm going to just talk about where we're at in that One Water Plan to, I think it's helpful context for the budget discussion. So we are currently in phase one of it. We have two water projects, which I'll talk about, two sewer projects, and then two storm water projects. So I'll talk about our two water projects first. The water tank rehabilitation. It's a complete rehabilitation of four Blanca tanks and two King's tanks. And it's, some of it is being disassembled and refurbished out of factory. Some of it's being replaced. Some of it's being ground down, and it's receiving a new treatment of coatings. And just to kind of give you an idea of why we're doing this, our tank structures are deteriorated. We have a harsh ocean environment, and, you know, salt does not do well, saltwater does not do well with steel. And so you see these kinds of things where in some cases, operators can't even walk up the ladder safely. And also, we have a deferred maintenance problem, so we really are in catch-up mode. And catch-up mode came with the One Water Plan, which is, it's a good thing that we're working on it. But again, we are in catch-up mode on some of these projects. We are under construction on this project, so this is something that we are actively doing out in the field with a contractor, Superior Tanks. We believe it'll take another year to complete. There may be some scope changes. We may do some seismic upgrades. And if so, we may have to come to City Council at a later time. Currently, the project cost, total cost, is $5.4 million, and it's funded by the Water Fund. We're beginning to see that we may be able to get some cost savings out of this one, so this is not a hard number. But this is what's being budgeted, not only for this current fiscal year, but in the out years. But this may change in time, and if it does, then we would bring that at a mid-year budget cycle. So that's the location of the two sets of tanks. The Nutmeg Pressure Zone is a very, very important project. It's a combination of several One Water Projects. I won't bore you with the details, but the big story here is that this project supports our fire flow. So fire flow is when the fire department comes out and pulls water from a fire hydrant, they have to have enough gallons per minute to be, to come out of that fire hydrant to be effective, whereas we can't have a loss of pressure in the rest of the system as a result of that. And currently, that is a significant vulnerability of our system, so very high priority that we get this fixed. We are looking at putting in a new tank that's over a million gallons to help us with that issue. You see here that currently our nutmeg tank is around 142,000 gallons, so that's a significant upsizing of that. And we're currently at 30% design of this project, and we think we can complete this project in the next three years. This is a project that has ballooned in price by our estimates to $19 million, and it's fully funded by the Water Fund. So it's not $19 million for next fiscal year, but over the life of the project. And there's Nutmeg in relation to the other two sets of tanks. And then the two sewer projects. I'll go through these quickly because they're a bit similar. The key issue here is the inflow and infiltration issue. We have clean water getting into the pipes during storm events. That's creating capacity issues in our sewer lines. So the Beach Comer Sewer, we're at 100% design. We'd like to take that to bid soon, possibly this summer or fall. We think it could take up to two years to complete. We are also looking at doing an additional phase of this project that's not included in this cost that involves work in the backyards in that tract. Right now, just for the sewer main on Beach Comer, we're looking at a project cost of $1.9 million, fully funded by the Sewer Fund. And then the Atascadero Main Project, same thing. We have inflow and infiltration issues here. The trick with this project is that the Atascadero portion is wrapped up for sequential construction with the Wharf Conveyance Line. That was the initial thinking, at least. We may be changing plans with that. And so because of that, even though we're at 60% design complete on that project, we are really in the middle of reviewing our completion timeline. That said, we think the whole project will cost $9 million. It's a complex project, particularly on Atascadero Road, where we have many different pipeline alignments, including the Cayuco Sanitary District Alignment that's still underground, that takes up some space. So again, this one is fully funded by the Sewer Fund. And I'd like to talk, and I have some storm, two storm drain projects to talk about. We have a couple of storm drains that have failed CMP. That's corrugated metal pipe, which is what this material is. And these pipes we're finding are starting to fail, and they're causing underground voids. So we'll get a hole in the pipe through rust because water is just sitting in those ripples. And the water sits and rust forms, and then you get a hole. And then water intrudes into the dirt and pulls away the dirt, and voids are created. So we are already at 100% design complete on this project. This is something that's a high priority for public work staff. We've been working on for a while. We're preparing a bid. The project cost for this one is $325,000. It's funded by the General Fund and Sewer Fund. Normally, storm water projects are not funded by sewer. This one only is partially because there is a sewer line underneath this storm line, and we are looking at replacing that sewer line as well, while we have it opened up. This is the Sequoias Drive Storm Drain Repair. Again, very similar situation. I'm hoping you can see that there's holes here in this pipe. This is not a good situation. Our maintenance staff actually has patched this, and I can show you a picture of that. So we're still in the project approval phase of this. This is very early on. 12 to 18 months to completion, funded by the General Fund at $120,000. This was the void we're talking about. You know, again, not good, very dangerous. And again, we were able to do a temporary patch on that so that we can set up a design and go ahead and put in a new line. So future challenges for the One Water Plan and the projects. Water, daily use, honestly, no major deficiencies, no major concerns. But about 75% of our pipes are aging, asbestos concrete pipe that are over 60 years old. The shelf life of these pipes, you know, depending on conditions, can be anywhere from 60 to 100 years. So they are kind of at the end of their life, and we do not have an annual pipe replacement plan or anything like that. So right now, if it breaks, we fix it. We have the fire flow issues that I discussed earlier, as well as, in general, we have a shallow water supply. Right now, we have state water, and we have groundwater in the Morro Valley Basin. So that is a big vulnerability in our system. If anything were to ever happen, like an earthquake that took out state water, we would have a water supply issue that, you know, there are solutions to, but it would be a serious concern. Now, when recycled water comes online, that's going to change this dynamic quite a bit, but this is still, at this time, a concern. For wastewater, daily use, no major deficiencies. As I mentioned, there's this inflow and infiltration issue that we're working on with two projects. Storm water, we have corrugated metal piping in our system. We don't have this fully defined at this time in terms of how much of this we're seeing across the city. That's something we'd want the One Water Plan update to look into, to make sure we're addressing those issues, so we don't see those sinkholes popping up. We have poor storm drain infrastructure. Most streets don't have a storm drain system. The water just comes down the road. And the other challenge is that there's no dedicating funding source. So there's a Water Fund, there's a Sewer Fund, there's no Storm Water Fund. The funding comes from General Fund or from Measure Q and E Funds. And I'll just make one note about One Water. That's, and I've already said this, but when we do update the plan, we would scope out a phase two, which would include new capital projects. So that concludes the beginning part of my presentation, Mayor.
Greg, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thanks for the comprehensive overview. And council members, looking for questions on any of the capital projects that Greg has just gone over and any of the One Water Plan slash other projects that he has mentioned. So Councilmember Heller, I see your hand, sir, please.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Uh Greg, outstanding report and uh presented quickly, which I appreciate and uh very, very helpful. Wanted to ask you about the pavement, the pavement management plan. You said that if we have two million dollars a year, we can keep the roads in the condition that they're in now, the streets. So I'm wondering, um considering that the price increases, the construction materials and so forth, if that two million dollars a year is going to be sufficient? That's question number one. Question number two is, I believe our former Public Works Director said to to bring our strip pavement up to a seventy pavement condition index number seventy PCI would probably take thirty million dollars. Is that some, is that a number that you think is uh realistic? And if so, um is it really conceivable that we would uh, well, how much money would we, well, never mind the last part. What do you think about the thirty million?
Yeah, you're right. Those are great questions. I'm relying on some of the same data that the former Public Works Director was looking at. And um as you know, the economy is has changed in that in that interim time. So um the the project cost to maintain our current pavement condition would likely be higher. I I don't have new data to look at. But you know, at this time, with the best of our data, I think two million dollars is a good stretch goal, um you know, you know, just in my in my humble opinion.
Okay, uh with respect to the One Water Projects, you answered a lot of my questions regarding the let's see here, the Main Street Atascadero Project. Uh you said you split it into segments. Is there any chance, and it's sixty percent design? Is that design going to get done in time so it won't delay the the work of the CFP project?
Good question again. Um the the work doesn't have to happen consensually uh. What word am I looking for? Sequentially? The 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 work does not have to happen sequentially with the Wharf uh project with with the conveyance work going in. Part of this is is wrapped up in the in the Cayucos alignment as well, as 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 you know. And so that kind of adds a complication because it it limits um uh our design options uh for for that corridor. There there are a lot of pipes in the ground down there. So we think we can, we can wait until after Wharf uh construction and and until after the Wharf is brought online to to do that work on Atascadero Road if needed.
Oh, okay. Now, the number of these projects, you said they're fully funded by the Sewer Fund or the Water Fund. Is that money set aside in accumulation fund or is it in the the single fund, which covers operations and capital expenses?
Yeah, so it's um it's in the Sewer Capital Fund, uh because I I believe we're consolidating the accumulation fund. Sarah might be able to answer that question uh more intelligently than I can. But um I I will say that I'll be showing some projections, um some some Sewer Fund forecasts later in this presentation that will show um where we're at uh i- in the Sewer Fund over the next five years, uh including um consideration of of those capital costs. So I I think that might actually answer your question.
Okay, and then I saw the F sixty thousand dollars uh budgeted to update the One Water Plant. So the One Water Plant, uh I have it in a binder behind me, behind this ocean here, uh is very, very detailed and complete. And and I don't know how many of those projects we's we've actually uh completed since the it was approved in two thousand and eighteen. But do we really need an update on on that at this point? I mean, don't you have a sense of what projects need to come next? And based on what we did already, we spent three quarters of a million dollars on that plan. And I'm curious why you think we need an update at this point?
Yeah, no, that's that's a good question. It it's true that uh we have a strong list of projects in the current One Water Plan. Certainly enough to keep us busy for quite some time, but um just as due diligence, conditions change. Things things happen in our infrastructure systems uh that may impact um prioritization. A good example of that is, you know, we're we're now going to be do- doing recycled water. We're now going to have a Wharf plant uh that we we didn't have before. Also, some of the other work that we're doing um could be taken into consideration for the update. Now, now that said, the update scope is is not going to be as um uh global and grand as as the original One Water Plan. So like you said, the One Water Plan costs three quarters of a million dollars. That this would only cost, uh well, I I don't want to predict cost, but we think it'll it'll cost around sixty thousand dollars. So it'll it'll be a much um it's kind of smaller uh update. It's it's not going to be a new full One Water Plan.
And it just, does it detail the the scope that you need for specific projects or what do you get for that sixty thousand?
That's the product that I would expect, yes, so that so that we can get a a new prioritization and a new understanding if there's any new deficiencies in our system. Just an another example I I'd like to list is the uh force main that goes under Highway One near the Cloisters area. So the old Cloisters plan did not um call that out as uh in danger of imminent threat. So conditions change over time. Uh and another example is now we have these corrugated metal pipes that are failing. We don't know where all of them are. That that would take a lot of staff time to go and do, and so that those are things that the uh update would investigate.
Right, okay. Uh those are my questions and what you've talked about so far. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Heller. Councilmember Barton, please.
Greg, I'm curious about the, um what I wrote down that you said was it was going to take approximately two million a year to get on top of bringing our streets back to better condition. That, do we have any hope of of doing more than that? Or is is that what we're going to settle for, basically reconstructing them in the uh this, in the same in the same way that they've been handled before and be able to stretch our money farther? Or is there, are there going to be some streets, maybe the busier ones perhaps, that have more of a take it down to the base and uh start over again with the uh the amount of rock that's needed underneath there to hold hold it up? Just kind of how how do you see this happening? Will we kind of uh divide them up by priority or?
Yeah, thank you for that question. Um so yeah, the two million dollars per year, um as as mentioned, is from the the most recent available data that we have, and and that's actually to maintain our current street condition. And so when when I say our current street condition, um we do uh a a pavement management plan where where the uh streets are studied. And um that brings us a a PCI or Pavement Condition Index. And right now, I think our index, and forgive me, don't quote me on it, but I believe it's at sixty-three um and falling. And so at every year, we don't do the two million or whatever that new number is, given cost escalations. It it's, that number is going to fall. So the look and feel of of the um, and this this may be a bit of irony here, but but the look and feel of of the city's streets may not significantly change, even though our PCI might be going um up if we were to invest more. So to answer the other, the other part of your question is, you know, at this time, we don't have plans to reconstruct any streets. You're right, that 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 needs to happen. But uh I mean, just one block uh could cost three quarters of a million dollars um of at at a residential street. And we simply don't have the kind of funding available to us at this time um in in the pavement management program to do that kind of work. So what we focus on is uh digouts where where roads have failed, particularly on our collector streets. Uh and we also try to hit our residential streets as well when we can. Um and then sealing projects to preserve condition uh of those collector streets. Eric Rideo, our our city engineer, who who I see just popped in, did a really excellent presentation of P WAB a couple of months ago. That that showed the the kind of bang for your buck you get when you when you focus on uh residential streets, uh rebuilding them. From a from a PCI standpoint, you you don't, you don't really get any bang for your buck on that. And you know, I I would love to uh be able to bring that presentation or have Mr. Uh Rideo bring that presentation to City Council to to go through that. Because I I don't think that's a well-understood concept, and a a lot of folks sometimes will see us paving a street that looks pretty good. And wonder, well, wait, you know, my my street looks terrible. Why, why are you, why are you doing a street that looks good? Well, it it's because the street that looks terrible has already failed. And to repair that street, I mean, could be an entire year to just for one street, an entire year's budget, if not, if not more. We're, we're trying to preserve other streets um from failing, um because we get more bang for our buck that way. So I I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, good question. Councilmember Ford.
Thank you, Mayor. Um thank you, Mr. Qualick, for that um really comprehensive report, and I appreciate the work that you've done. And also that Mr. Rideo has done. I I got to see that um presentation that took place during P WAB and um very detailed information about PCI and what all of that means and really puts it in layman terms. So I look forward to that, you know, coming to council because I think it it would be great for all of us to to see. I do have a question, um since we're on that subject. I do have a question, um kind of a broad question when it comes to that specific subject on redoing streets all the way down to, you know, from the beginning, you know, where it needs, where it needs to go. Like, what, if we look forward in the future on on, like, what would it take for us to even get started on that type of project? I mean, I heard Councilmember Heller mention, you know, thirty million dollars to even con- consider doing the streets. I don't know if that number is is accurate, but um how does a city like us, our size, our budget? How do we look forward? How do we plan to eventually address that issue?
Again, another great question, and I'm I'm really appreciative that um Councilmember Ford and 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 all the other uh council members are asking questions about pavement management because it's something that that we're passionate about in the department. And I know Mr. Rideo has um some expertise in. And so but before I kick that question over to him, I would just like to say that it's very difficult. All cities deal with this. You, there is no city with a a hundred PCI or even a ninety PCI. This is a tough issue because it's so expensive. The city of Grover Beach recently did a bond measure, uh and I don't remember if it's thirty or forty million dollars, but it's a, I I think it's a five-year plan where they are doing a massive, massive uh project across the city. And they are, they are smaller than we are. So um I I don't know all of the details of um the the issues that they have on in the streets there. But I would imagine ours would be more expensive for a variety of reasons, including that we're on slopes and that we we have, particularly in Morro Bay, such poorly constructed streets to begin with. But perhaps uh city engineer Rideo could could address that as well?
Sure, yeah, that's a great question. Uh the the financial piece is always going to be the most difficult question. How do you fund it? I think, you know, regular pavement ratings and keeping up on our system is key. That's something that I plan to to uh do over this next year is to get a a long-term agreement with a consultant to be looking at our pavements on an annual basis. The last time it was performed was back in twenty twenty, so we are working off of old data. And the two million could, uh to uh Councilman, Councilmember Heller's point, could be inflated, you know, not even close or maybe not enough uh in today's dollars. So um that's something we need to be on top of every year. You don't rate all your streets every year, but we can break it up into sections and and at least have an idea. And and we do have a great tool called Streetsaver that uh the city has a license to. And we, we do have our streets in that system. And we just need to use it to its fullest potential, which has budgeting abilities so that we can bring regular updates on where we're at, uh run budget scenarios to know, okay, what what is it going to cost to keep our PCI constant? How much, what's the initial investment to bring us up to a PCI seventy, those kind of questions? So um these are, these are great questions to to ask, and I think it's probably worth doing a a deeper dive into pavement at a future council meeting.
That's, that's great information because um I think that what happens often and li- and at least what I've heard from residents um here is that it seems that um North Morro Bay often residents feel kind of a, uh I wouldn't say abandoned, but left out. And you know, there's that bit of a disconnect from this side of town to that side of town. And um and I think it's important that we really do start planning, a- as you are have mentioned, that, you know, taking those steps and planning to to right these streets um and to get them where they need to go. But I understand it's it's such a huge project and it won't happen tomorrow. But I I appreciate that. I do have one other question regarding streets. And it came across actually by um in our correspondence today by an individual, and it's something that I've actually been thinking about. Just going around town and looking at our our street striping, um you know, our our crosswalks and and that sort of thing. Is that, is uh redoing the striping of our streets and our bike lanes and crosswalks and that sort of thing, is that included in this budget? Or is that something that's would be separate um that has not been addressed and that I, maybe I missed it in the budget, but?
Yeah, um that's, that's another good question. And so um before um I asked Mr. Rideo to to answer that specific question about whether it's in the budget, you know, we we do have a new maintenance superintendent that's starting in the month of June. We do have folks on our maintenance crew that uh do have uh capacity and ability to um not regularly stripe, but but do targeted striping projects, like the one that they did in front of the Great American Fish Company a couple of weeks ago. Um and so that is something that once we have a new superintendent, um he and Mr. Rideo will be working together on perhaps targeting some areas for striping. But um Eric, could you answer the question about whether or not uh striping is included in in the in the two budgets?
I think as far as bu- the budget ask, it's, it's really, uh we, we're going to right-size the project based on that. But um I think you're exactly right. There are some pavement markings that need to be refreshed and striping throughout town. It's um cost-wise, it's it's definitely not, not a huge cost driver in these big, in these, uh in the pavement projects. But I I think it's something that we could definitely plan into our surface seal project since there'll be a striping contractor already in town is add scope to that. And see that we cover those, um you know, the areas that are highly traveled, like, for example, the the roundabout. Some of those pavement markings are are gone because it's so heavily traveled. Crosswalks are very important. Uh center line, I've noticed on Main Street in certain areas, the center line's gone and even some of the reflectors. So I think, yes, you're you're right. We do need to do some refreshing of that since we don't have staff uh a a normal, you know, striping crew, so that that would be something we'd look at.
Okay, great. Thank you. I, yeah, just prioritizing that and and as you mentioned, it's not extremely expensive, but maybe, you know, a less expensive fix that helps the safety of our roads. I have one last question, um and I I'm not sure where this fits in the budget and if this is the appropriate time. But do we, did we budget um what the cost would be to implement paid parking, the infrastructure for that? And um bringing that about, I I'm thinking within the year. Is that something that was in the budget that I missed? And if it was in there, I apologize. And where, where would the appropriate time be to talk about that?
So the parking, pick, parking is in, still in planning phase. We, we use Walker Consultants to do the initial study that determined there is a parking issue. And council gave um staff the authority or direction to move forward to plan a pilot program. So Walker, we we brought them back and they're putting together a a plan to share with the stakeholder group on the waterfront. That includes folks who are voting rural, the boards, uh members of the Harvard Advisory Board, businesses, et cetera. We we hope to kind of share what we have with them in the next month or so. And then bring something to the advisory boards and city council later this year. If if all goes to plan and and it's something that's supported, then it would need to go to Coastal Commission. So we'd probably be looking at something going in play before summer of twenty twenty-three. So what what's in the budget is to continue the planning efforts, which is separate from the CIP. Good question.
Okay, yeah, that's I I that's what I was curious about. So, okay, so the planning part of it is included, but not the actual implementation of that infrastructure. Okay, thank you. That answers my question. I don't have any further questions on this part of this presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Edis.
Thank you, Mayor, and I actually don't really have any questions, but the struggle is real up here on the north side of Morro Bay. So um I appreciate Councilmember Heller bringing that up and would love to see some equity in how we approach the streets across the entire city. But mostly, I just wanted to make a mostly I just wanted to make a comment that I'm really happy that this report came forward, that we're looking at the capital projects. I really appreciate the, the explanation that I felt like was really easy for the general public as well as myself to understand. And I know we've been talking a lot about how we need to make sure that we're paying attention, that we're planning, that we're funding, and that we have a longer-term view of our capital needs. And so I want to appreciate getting started with that this evening, and I hope that moving forward, we'll continue to have this kind of update come back to us so that we can track it. And, and I'm glad that we're staffing up in the department. It's, it's what Morro Bay residents have been asking for. I don't know if they knew that's what they were asking for, but I do believe it's what people have been asking for, and I'm, I'm really excited that we're starting to deliver.
Great. Thanks so much. It's always great to go last because all the good questions have really been asked, but I will ask one. And Mr. Qualick, this is for you, sir. You spoke eloquently about the added FTEs, et cetera, in Public Works Department, which hopefully now enables us to adequately address CIP projects, get them completed according to documented timelines as they're able to be funded. My question to you is, are we there? Or is there more needed in order to make sure that we realize the completion of these projects in a timely manner?
Thank you for that question, Mayor. That's a question that I've been struggling with for the past year as we do staff up and as we do train up. You know, I, I always believe in building people up from inside. We have really good people here in, in the department, and so that's even, even a train up in consolidated maintenance to help us do digouts on roads has an impact on our capital projects. So I try to look at it holistically, but with regards to the engineering division, I must say that the, the Wharf project is kind of the pink elephant in the room. And even though, you know, none of us are directly managing the project, a lot of our time gets taken up in that, in that project. And so I hesitate to give a long-term answer because I want to be honest. And I, I don't know what our needs are going to be after the Wharf program is done, particularly, you know, after this calendar year. And so I'd really like to take a rain check on that question, if I may, for another nine months so that I could better evaluate what our needs are to implement all of these other capital projects besides the Wharf.
Rain check administered. Note taken to recall and ask you again in a few months. Thank you. Greg, appreciate your candor and honesty as always. Okay, let's go ahead and move on to the WRF quarterly report. And at the end of section one, we'll take any other questions you may have, and then I'll go to public comment on, on this section. So take it away, Mr. Qualick.
Hey, Greg, you want me to go?
Sorry, I lost the unmute button there for a second. I'll tee you up, Paul, and and let me just do a slide or two here. So thank you. The Wharf overview. So this is, this is kind of a double discussion. One is the request for the upcoming fiscal year, but then the other is our, is our quarterly report. I just want to give a kind of broad, high-level update. We have a new plant expected to be brought online in November of 2022. And that will bring the city into compliance for wastewater discharge. That, that's a, that was a major objective of this project. So we're really excited about that. We have had delays. They've been driven by lots of things. In many cases, regulators, and then we've had other challenges like soil slips and the microtunneling under the roundabout and things like that. As, as you all well know, we have a, a new program estimate at completion of $159.8 million that our program manager, Paul Amico, will be talking about quite a bit. And some of the reasons for that, I'd just like to highlight. Compliance with requirements from regulators, replenishment of a contingency budget, which a, a lot of that has, has been eaten up, consolidated accounting methodology that I look forward to Paul's presentation on. Increased project management and city costs as well as an increased cost just to do business in construction in the state of California. So again, high level recycled water. Wanted to let you all know that we did award a pilot injection well contract in late April. We're hoping to have that contractor drill that well in, in late June or sometime in July. We will be studying the hydrogeology of the basin to optimize placement of other wells as part of the recycled water project. And just a reminder that the initial modeling estimated 80% of the city's water supply could be extracted from the basin with recycled water in place. So kind of high-level stuff on the Wharf. I'd like to kick it to Mr. Amico for the Wharf quality report. And, and Paul, you can just tell me when you want me to move the slide.
Welcome, Paul.
Thank you again, Mayor, council members, and community members. Again, appreciate the time you give to us to update you on the Wharf and, and so we'll, I'll try to run through this pretty quick as, as I know Councilmember Heller likes us to do and keep it up pretty high level. So Greg, next slide. So presentation overview today, just, just want to kind of re-base line and, and remind everybody what the purpose of this program is. I always like to do a construction update. A lot of folks, you know, see us around town digging up streets, putting pipes in the ground. We now moved on to Tascadaro Road, so I know there's a lot of interest in that. Before we get into the actual update of the, the quarterly report, and then the, the moment we've all been waiting for is the program budget development and how we got to the new number of around 160 million to complete the program. So next slide, Greg, if you don't mind. Oh, well, let me, let me just talk about that from the, from the, from the standpoint. So just to remind everybody, moving the treatment plant and decommissioning yield plant was, was driven largely by the regulator, the, the Regional Water Quality Control Board. Morro Bay was one of the last communities on the, on the, in California to have an ocean waiver that, that allowed for a lower level of wastewater treatment because of the distance that the awful discharge is offshore. And so a number of years ago, the city entered into an agreement with the Regional Water Quality Control Board that, that required the city to move to upgrade the plant to meet modern sewage discharge requirements, modern wastewater, treated wastewater requirements. And through a long process, the city selected the site up off of South Bay Boulevard. And through that, through that process, and through some innovative thinking, city leadership and the engineering department, Public Works Department concluded that to be a more resilient community from a drinking water supply perspective, to treat the wastewater to a very high level, to make purified water that can be injected in the ground and then shore up the city's drinking water supply. So what we're doing up at the plant is a, a state-of-the-art facility that treats the wastewater to a very high level, even through the normal wastewater treatment process. And then we've bolted a drinking water plant on the back end of the plant, making purified water that can be injected in the ground over near the old power plant site. So again, very innovative project, very forward-thinking, and consequently, the city was able to secure federal funding from WIFIA. And I, I can never really remember exactly what WIFIA stands for, but it's for innovative water projects like this. And so between WIFIA and state loans, the city was able to secure some very low interest rates because of this, the, the nature of this project that, that on a long-term basis was going to allow the city to save a lot of money on the life of the loan. It did not come without its costs, as you'll see and we discussed throughout the process or the presentation tonight. But in the end, the, the amount of money that's being saved across the life of a loan is, is, is more going to pay, more than pay for itself through some of the trials and tribulations that the program team has encountered along the way. So with that, I'll move quickly into the conveyance facilities update. Apologize to everyone. Pump Station B on the right, that is a, actually a typo. That should say Pump Station A. Pump Station A, interestingly enough, is now moving along quite well. Pump Station A for a long time was actually quite far behind schedule and a lot of challenges because of its location near the beach and dewatering that, that site. But it is on track. Anvil now has a new, Anvil Builders, our contractor, has a new management team in place, new field superintendent. Really is breathing new life into the, into the crews out there and, and also focused very closely on this electrical building, which happens to be, and, and really was the, the crux of this project and, and could have held it up. And, and really put Anvil in a very, very bad position in that they couldn't energize the pump station and get this thing up and running. So as you can see, the building's coming up. Soon, electrical switchgear will be put into place and eventually we'll get a power connection from PG&E and be able to power up this, this pump station. Before we move to the next slide, Greg, just want to call everybody's attention to the middle slide there. That's looking down into what we call the wet well, where the wastewater will be collected and then pumped from that. So it's like a bucket or like a sump pump if you've got a basement in your home to keep it dry. So, next slide. I know it's a little, it's old news, and, and I'm hoping everybody believes it's old news and distant memory with South Bay Boulevard being closed, but South Bay Boulevard is open. We came in, much like Indiana Jones in all those old movies where he's running and getting almost squashed by boulders. We said we'd have it open by the end of April, and I think that picture on the right, I got around 4:30 on April 29th, which was a Friday, so we were very pleased with that. I think you can imagine I was on pins and needles, having come to the council a number of different times, saying we will definitely have this open by the end of April. And my friends at Anvil heard me loud and clear, and we had many tense discussions around this, but we got it done. And, and I have to give kudos to Anvil. They worked very, very hard to get this done. And we want to say thank you to everyone in the community that was patient with us and, and understood, hopefully understood that the original eight-week timeline that we discussed, we needed to stretch to that four months in order to maintain a safe working environment for our construction workers and also for the traveling public. So South Bay Boulevard open, and that, what you see on the right is final paving. We will not be going back in there except to paint lines on the road before the project is done. So do want to say one thing is we will have to go back into the intersection at South Bank Quintana at a later time to install the purified water line. Very less impactful, and, and over just a couple of days, there'll be lane restrictions in that area, and we'll certainly notify the community and council when that's, when we go in to do that. Next slide, Greg, if you don't mind. So Bike Path and Utility Bridge, one of the big hurdles that we had to clear, again, stemming from the fact that the city accepted federal funding and which triggered some much more robust environmental and cultural resource protection measures. This was the area that, that really had held up the project for quite some time, the pipe bridge abutments and the pipelines north of this leading up to Tascadaro Road. We cleared that hurdle with the state and federal regulators, and we were able to complete the excavation of those bridge abutments and do all the required cultural resource clearance activities in quite a bit shorter timeframe than I expected that we were going to. So we're very, very pleased with, with that, how that progressed, and, and glad to say that, that we were able to accomplish that work without impact to any cultural resources. So we're very pleased by that. Overseen by our great team of archaeologists and also our Native American cultural resource monitors. So good job to, again, to Anvil to get that done in, in our, our colleagues at Far Western. The picture you see on the left is the joint trench, joint trench along the bike path. We have, obviously, we've gotten a lot of interesting questions about the bike path and when we're going to have that open again. Our current aim is the end of September. We're hoping to beat that date. But it will largely be driven by the, the pipe bridge. What we don't want to do is open the bike path and then have people go back there and get trapped. Can't get across the bridge. That is still an active work zone. Can't have people in there. And the, the pipe bridge will take until that September 30th date, if not a, a bit beyond that, to get done. And so the pipe, the, the bike path remains closed. I did get the opportunity, though, to meet, just as an update to council, and to the community, got to meet with our landscape architect, making very good progress on the restoration plan, the detailed restoration plan, and hope to be bringing that to council at either a city manager's report or even a special presentation, what we're, what we're seeing there. Our landscape architect is, is going to make some revisions based on some, some comments and questions we had. As soon as we get that done, we'll, we'll bring that back and, and show everybody what, what's in store for the bike path. I'm hoping everyone's pleased with that as we are. Next slide, please. So you all will be, we will be coming back in the next meeting, June 14th. We have some change orders and other contract amendments, but just notable contract amendment number four, expected to be brought to city council on, as I said, the 14th. It's interestingly enough, we're going to have a credit to the city. It's a, it's actually some good news that we'll bring instead of coming with our hands out for additional contract increases. We'll, we'll actually be getting a credit. If you recall, the California Air Resources Board has requirements for emissions for our backup generators. It's administered through the Air Pollution Control District. Those requirements came down. It's, it's an interesting process, and as those generators were being fabricated, the, the, the resource board requirements sort of compelled the Pollution Control District to look harder at these, and, and actually it looked like we were going to have to upgrade those generators, and we didn't actually have to do that. Through some modeling, we demonstrated that, that, that it was not going to be as impactful to air pollution or to, to particular pollution as we thought. And so we were able to continue forward with what was originally specified in the, in the contract documents. So that'll be a credit to the city for the change order that you had all approved, I think, a couple of months ago for additional emissions controls. One unfortunate circumstance that happened was unexpected bedrock conditions near South Bay Boulevard in Teresa, which is at the north end of the Highway One ramps there. So that was very slow, unanticipated, unforeseen condition from both the design perspective and the contractor. So they're entitled to some additional compensation because they weren't able to make the, the production that was originally bid due to those unforeseen conditions. So you'll see that, we'll cover that in much greater detail when we come to the council meeting in June. Next slide. The facility itself is progressing as expected. They are on schedule from, they had been behind for a little while, and they've since recovered. Phelan's Black and Beach has recovered. What you can see on the left is Wharf site progress as of a couple of weeks ago. What you would see if we showed you a picture from Monday of next week is that the entire site will be paved. So all underground piping in the ground, tested, accepted, and pavement going down. We were there last week, or I was there last week, walking around with the Public Works Advisory Board showing them the facility, and they were getting that subgrade prepped and getting ready to pave. I believe it started yesterday, and they anticipate to complete that by the end of the week. On the right, we, we like to use a lot of lingo. We engineers on a lot of three-letter acronyms or TLAs, as we like to call them. The MBR, which stands for Membrane Bio-reactor, is the heart of the, the facility. That is what treats the wastewater, those, those tanks with, you can see the water on the bottom of that picture. That's where we feed the bugs, feed the bacteria, and then we filter out the, we separate the water from the, we call it sludge, but some people might call it, you know, stuff in the wastewater in those membrane bioreactors just to the, above those aeration bases. So as you can see, that's progressing nicely. We're actually circulating clean water through the facility now to test all these individual systems, get the control systems in place. A lot of very detailed work going on right now to get the, the facility started up. A lot of testing, a lot of training of city staff. Our operations staff is a very, very talented group of individuals. Mike and his crew, they're, they're, they're working hard on understanding the plan and, and really asking a lot of great questions, digging in. So when they get the keys to the facility, they, they're experts at its operation. So things are progressing very well with the facility itself. So with that, any questions on, on construction before I can move on, or, or we can go into the quarterly report?
We'll, we'll do it after the report, Paul. If that's okay, thank you.
Just great. Okay, so again, we say PWAAB here because this was a presentation that I gave to PWAAB last week, quarterly report update. We have a couple of our, one of our council members, Councilmember Heller, and the mayor sit on a, what we call the Wharf Subcommittee, provided some great leadership and guidance to us about this, about the, the format of the report, which we've been using for quite some time, driven by some questions past CFAC and other folks within the city had had. So we were asked to greatly simplify that to reduce the overall page count for what council and the public have to read in order to understand what's going on. We eliminated a lot of redundant sections, added appendices for detailed information. So we took a lot of what people would have to wade through to get to the overall message that was confusing, push that, push that into appendic, appendices, and then we, we updated the cash flow curve, we call it an S curve, to reflect cost and schedule updates. And then, and then again, we revised the presentation of the program. Uh, cost and schedule updates, uh, and then, and then again, we revised the presentation of the program's schedule to, um. Identify specific milestones and what's driving what we call the critical path or the needed activities that would be, uh. That, that control the completion of the project. Um, so very pleased with how this has come together. We hope that you all, um, have, uh, benefited from that simple, simplification and we're interested in any questions you might have in ways we may be able to enhance it in the future. Um, uh, I liked creating it a lot better this time than, uh, in past. It was a lot less hair pulling. And a lot less effort in terms of getting the, the, the thing done. So I really appreciate that, um, as I'm sure, and I hope you all do. Spent quite a bit of time at P WAB discussing the schedule as, uh, I expected we would. So what we've got, uh, what we show here is, um, we show. Um, completed activities to the left of the line, the red line running down roughly the center of the page represents what we call the data date in lingo that we use in the program. But it just simply means as of the time of the report. One of the things that's weird about doing the quarterly report is we get financial information that is, uh, that we have to process a lot of information on dispersments. And a lot of information on invoices that the city pays, um, uh, internal city costs. It's, it, it takes a lot to get through that. Uh, generally takes us about, takes the city about three to four weeks to. Well, we start getting information, you know, initially pretty quickly, but then. Things sort of trickle in and it takes us a while to get things organized. So generally speaking about six weeks to prepare the report before we can get it. In folks' hands and then present it. So it's, it's a little weird to present a report about. Stuff that happened six weeks ago. So what we did with this particular, uh, quarterly report version, because we were in the middle of budgeting. And developing budgets, what we wanted to show is that the schedule is extended, is extending because of. Uh, the delays that we've discussed and. So we wanted to present a schedule that was more in time with what the quarterly report was communicating. And unfortunately, the, the financial information is six weeks old. But the schedule is really what's driving the budget development. So that's why we wanted to present it in this way. So we want to call your attention to a couple of items here. Which is the startup of the facility, which is really the heart of the program, the startup of the worth, but it's controlled by our pipelines and pump stations. Anvil was able to really control the schedule around the pump stations and try to get, uh, to a point where, um, they get energized, which really we. We do lose a bit of control when we start working with PG&E, uh, because we really are on their timeline for when they want to plug the pump stations in. Um, and so we try to get that work done as fast as we can so that if PG&E gets delayed themselves, we don't necessarily get impacted from. Uh, that schedule standpoint. Unfortunately concurrently, we were delayed, uh, by getting the pipe bridge constructed. So what you can see here is that. The critical path really has become the, the utility bridge and the, the clearance and can, and excavation of those, um, bridge abutments. So at this point in time, um, what is, what we're seeing right now is that the, the construction of the utility bridge is going to be. It's going to result in a gap in the pipelines that may not allow us to get wastewater to the plant. Recent developments since we've come to P WAB. Um, we've gotten some good news and that there's some fittings that go to the pipe bridge, go on the pipe bridge that we're able to source. Um, they don't meet the requirement that the SRF has for American iron and steel. But we can put some fittings in temporarily and because we have two force mains, we may not be so impacted by. Pipe bridge construction and we may be able to start up the facility, uh, potentially sooner than October first, which is what we're planning on. But it as, as, uh, on that October first date that we have been targeting up to this point. Um, what that results in, and I'll discuss it a bit in, in the budget discussion is. The city's exposed to a potential delay claim from Philance Black and Beach because. They can't start the facility up, complete the project on their schedule and cut all their people loose and hand it over to the city when they originally wanted to. So as I said, the site's getting paved, the equipment is there and now people are sort of sitting around twiddling their thumbs, waiting for the pipelines and the pump stations to be ready. So that they can accept wastewater, get the plant started up, get the biology stable, test all of the systems using wastewater and then get out of town. So right now, our biggest focus, our biggest challenge on the program is working with Anvil and working with Philance and Black and, Philance Black and Beach on. Shortening the gap between when they're ready to accept sewage and when we can actually get that wastewater, um, to the plant. So, um, this was a very consequential schedule to put into a quarterly report and, uh, we will continue to evolve this. Uh, did get a question. I want to acknowledge, uh, council member Heller asked a question, uh, the other day when we were, uh, discussing the schedule. We say. Uh, baseline schedule under discussion, what that just simply means is there's some float in the schedule that we're trying to shorten and some, uh, of the schedule elements that we continue. To work on to try to get this program done as expeditiously as possible. And, uh, but, and, and to, to get the city a reliable, um, system that as we said. Could be used to shore up the drinking water supply in the future. So next slide. So that leads us into budget development. Um, so, um, I'll cover each one of the components, uh, first the facility itself, then move to conveyance, then the recycled water and then, uh. And then to conclude this presentation, we will look at a comparison table of. Where the last quarterly reports budget, uh, landed and then what additional elements, uh, so I'll kind of bring it all together and summarize everything in one spot. But the facility itself, um, what drove about a four million dollar increase in our budget recommendation was, uh, to cover the entire. Uh, what we call the GMP or the guaranteed maximum price that, uh, F B V. Had given the city to say that the, the, the facility wouldn't, they would guarantee that it would not go a penny over that price. Um, past, uh, past budgeting exercises had, had sort of banked on the fact that the city. Was going to get some savings from, um, Philance Black and Beach. I didn't quite have that same philosophy. I believe that. Uh, given how things had gone on the program up at this, up to this point and given what I was seeing in terms of. Um, uh, this delay claim and other changes that were being made to the facility that we, it would be prudent and risk smart to budget the entire guaranteed mass, maximum price. Um, and so that, that drove an increase of a couple of million dollars, uh, to the budget on, on that item alone. Uh, we did need to replenish the contingency budget because we had sort of raided that budget a bit in the past in order to cover, um. Uh, changes to the con- to the conveyance facilities, uh, just in an interesting way that we had budgeted for contingency across the entire program, but now we're. We're parsing it out into each one of the components. Uh, we did add a million and a half to the conveyance delay claim. Um, uh, and, and that's based on, we came at that number a couple of different ways. One was. A gut feel from F B V on what they felt that a three month to four month gap between. Uh, when they're ready and when we would be ready to send wastewater to them would be, uh, and then we checked it, we got checked it, uh, uh, against what we know about their internal costs and. And what we see in analyzing their bills. Um, and we both sort of surrounded this number. So we felt that that one point five million dollar number would be a solid number to budget for. Um, that potential delay claim. And then we added budget for outfall inspection and cleaning, which is driven by the discharge permit from the regional water quality control board. That's about a half million dollars on that particular item. Um, next slide. If you don't mind. So in developing the conveyance budget, uh, we, uh, recommending about a two million dollar, two point one million dollar, I think, increase in the overall conveyance facility budget, uh, facilities budget. Again, replenish the contingency budget to cover a potential change that we know about and then future change. Uh, what we recommend generally from an industry perspective is that, um, owners, uh, carry about, um, five percent construction change order contingency. Uh, generally it's five percent of the contract amount. So in this case, we said five percent of what was remaining to be spent. On the contractors about, uh, twelve million bucks, uh, at the time we were doing budgeting. So it resulted in about six hundred thousand dollars and, uh, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in, uh. Contingency for future unknown change or unforeseen change at this point. Um, and then, um. In terms of additional scope of work for Anvil, um. The regional water quality control board through negotiating of the, negotiation of the discharge permit for the new facility. Had, uh, re- is requiring the city to, uh, change the discharge location for the existing, uh, reverse osmosis facility for the city's, uh. Production wells. There's a, uh, facility that the city runs to, um. Treat water that's pulled out of the ground through reverse osmosis process. Well, there is, um, water that's effluent from that facility that truly go, that currently goes to the power plant outfall. Now they want it into the city's, uh, outfall, the same outfall that we're going to be putting the, um, worth, uh, treated affluent in. So that results in about four hundred thousand dollars in piping modifications, both inside that facility and also in the yard piping around pump station A. Um, and then between the cultural monitoring and waterworks, uh, engineering services during construction, which is what E S D C stands for. Um, because of the extension in schedule, because of Anvil's addition of crews, we needed additional cultural resource monitors on site. And that is, has necessitated about a four hundred thousand dollar increase, um, to cover again additional time, additional crews working in multiple places. Um, this particular budget, the four hundred thousand, if Anvil, uh, progresses their work much more efficiently than we're currently. Estimating, which is based on dig days, then the city would pay less than that. So the actual cost may hopefully come in less than that. Um, and so, um, same thing with Waterworks. If we can get this done quicker, uh, Waterworks, our design consultant wouldn't be, uh, uh, so burdened. To continue to answer questions and work with Anvil on, on design, uh, clarifications and other questions. Lot of words on this, uh, slide, but I'll, I'll, um, I'll, I'll summarize it this at a high level. So we've got the pilot injection well, which, um. Historically had not been budgeted specifically. There was a number for construction, uh, that was kind of an old estimate that was put in place and. When we checked that estimate again, it seems, it seemed, it was, it seems appropriate what, for what we know today, even in light of. Material and labor cost increases in the construction market for the eventual pipeline and injection wells, but it didn't seem like it was. Sufficient to cover pilot injection well itself. So it was an old construction estimate that it was inclusive of a lot of things and then, uh, but we felt it was prudent to. Now that we had a bid price in hand to buy actual budget for the pilot injection, pilot injection well and add some contingency for that work. Um, we included a peer review of the work that our, our colleagues at G S I have been doing for studying the aquifer where we're going to be injecting the purified water. Um, this is such a critical component of this indirect potable reused approach that we felt it was, uh, uh, between Dan Heimel and. Myself, we felt it was very appropriate for the city to fund a peer review of that work. And in fact, yes, I did agree with that as well because it is such a critical component of the success of I P R to get that hydrogeological study right. Um, we had a design and, uh, engineering services during construction for, uh, amending Waterworks contract to extend this system up into the injection area. Uh, and then, uh, also additional professional services for future hydrogeological services related to permitting. Uh, archaeological and biological also related to permitting of the full scale injection, uh, system, um, in the recycled water component. So again, a lot of words went through that pretty quick and now next slide, uh. Oh, sorry, the program management, uh, budget development. So, uh, again, because the schedule is getting extended, um. That does incur, you know, that means the city does incur additional costs because of scheduled extensions, but also, um. Uh, as I've said in the past, to, to, to analyze and to. Manage the dispersments that, that the city is getting from WIFIA, from EPA and SRF. Um, that does take a bit more, uh, effort and it is, it is, you know, it does, the city does incur those, those management costs. In addition to that, where, you know, there's been a lot of transition at the city and, and, um, in terms of the, you know, the finance department at Public Works and. And so there's been a lot of effort that's been expended to get everybody on board and get everybody up to speed on what we've been doing. In addition to that, we've been tracking grant opportunities and, and preparing grant applications, which, uh, again has taken a bit more effort, but. The upside of that could be, you know, ten to, ten to twenty million dollars of additional funding that could come in that the city is not required to pay back, but it's an actual grant funding. So we're going to continue to track those grant funding opportunities and prepare those applications to try to get the city's financial burden, you know, continue to bring that down. Um, and then we've got, uh, again, our, our staff reports and presenting council. Um, we do public, a lot of public outreach and we answer a lot of questions from the public. Um, and then we have to prepare reports for the funding and regulatory agencies and, um, for, uh, for the council and for the committee. So, um. Again, administrative costs, uh, increases, uh, again, these are budgets. The city pays us on an hourly, uh, basis. So. Um, if we're able to accomplish this work more efficiently, because we're getting, you know, as we matured in the program. Then the city pays for, uh, you know, the actual cost of what, what we, of what our effort is on this. So these are all budget numbers and, uh, the. The aim is not to come back to council mid-year and say we're out of money. Um, uh, but to get a, get a, a, what I've come to call a risk smart budget put into place, uh, so that we don't have to do that. Next slide. And here's the comparison table. Again, a lot of numbers on this slide, but I'll just run down through, um. The columns here for, by each component, uh, the three different, um, facilities. And then program management and city costs originally, uh, F Y twenty one, twenty two, our last quarterly report before this one came out. Had a budget of around a hundred and forty four point seven million dollars, as you can see distributed. Um, you know, across the different components. Um, our new proposed budgets worth, the, the worth itself around just shy of eighty million dollars, seventy nine point seven. Uh, conveyance facilities, thirty nine point eight roughly, uh, recycled water gone up another, uh, couple of million there to account for. Um, better definition of that component. And also acknowledging, you know, material and labor increases and, uh, the fact that we do. We, we know a lot more about working in this cultural resource area, which we will continue to do so with these, uh, facilities. So. Wanted to make sure that there was an adequate budget there. Uh, and then as we said, um, we, um, moving into program management and city costs. Um, a lot of these, uh, budgets were set based on historical spending, uh, and, and looking at our, um. Uh, what we call our burn rate and what we're actually performing and then do forward projections based on the fact that. Major construction activities are going to be done by the end of this year and then we will move into closeout and then that burn rate will come down. So the difference there, that four point one million dollars of new funding, um, uh, contemplates, uh, professional services related to program management. And that's Carolo, our sub consultants, um, other consultants to the city, um, uh, that to, to move this whole program forward. At the same burn rate through the end of the year, but then coming down, uh. And stepping that down as we go and that four point one, we forward projected to get us to the end of the program. So, um, our aim is not to increase that budget, uh, but to hold the line. Uh, pay close attention to the burn rate, uh, accomplish our tasks more efficiently. Um, and, and really to try to drive, uh, savings in that, in that particular line item because we. As the consultant team can really, uh, focus on trying to control that. Um, and so, uh, again, our aim is to bring that in, uh, under that number as you would always want to do with any budget number. So with that, uh, overall proposed program budget, a hundred and fifty nine point eight, uh, with an increase of about fifteen point two million dollars, just shy of fifteen point two million dollars. Uh, for the overall program. With that, I know I'll do that somewhat quickly. I can take questions.
Hey, thank you, Paul. Very comprehensive overview. Appreciate that.
I'm sorry, Mayor. Uh, Paul, before you take questions, could you review the twelve point three million dollars that is being requested? Um, for this next fiscal year? That is the subject of the, of the step, of the. Presentation and, and the staff report outside of the worth quarterly report. I think it's important for, for, for council to see that and then be able to ask questions about that as well.
Sure, sure. Um, appreciate that, Greg. Sorry. Uh, so, uh, just the budget request as it breaks down, we get to twelve point three million. Um, which is being requested for this fiscal year. Um, the two. Um, the top line, three point four million, that would close out the worth itself. Uh, we, we need contingency budget. In case, uh, of any unforeseen, but we're getting down to the end. So our aim here, our hope here is that. We don't have to dig into that and we can, you know, we can leave some money on the table as it would be as a program team. But it does have, it does include that delay claim. Again, we are working very, very hard with the F B V team right now to define. That in a much, uh, better manner and, um, uh, to, to bring that in less than that, but, um, right now. Again, risk smart, knowing what we know as we sit here today, recommending about three and a half million dollars, uh, in, in the, of that twelve point three. Um, the treated wastewater outfall inspection and cleaning of a half million dollars, uh, that our, our aim right now is to get that done this fiscal year. Uh, we do have a window that we need to get that done and that window is, we have to move through, uh, that really needs to get done by the end of the year, uh, really toward the fall. That's the best time for the divers to be able to get in and do that. Um, so we're moving forward with some documents and if, if at some point. It looks like, um, we're not going to hit that window, that'll get kicked to next year. Um, and we would just move that in, into, uh, next year's, uh, budget request. But right now our aim is to get that done this fiscal year. Um, and that would take place in September timeframe. Uh, so we need to move, move through that pretty quickly. Um, and get those documents and get that awarded. Um, we're, we're kind of on the ragged edge with that particular one. Um, one point three million to replenish conveyance contingency. Again, that's known change plus the five percent of remaining spend as I described. Um, the seven hundred and five thousand on the next line, that's the engineering and cultural monitoring services between Waterworks and, um, and, uh, Cogstone. Um, and then four hundred thousand, as I described in an earlier slide for the R O facility modifications. And then four hundred thousand, as I described in an earlier slide, for the RO facility modifications. Three hundred and seventy four thousand for pilot injection well construction, that's an actual bid price in hand, plus some contingency, about five percent of that bid price. Continuing our hydro geo services and the peer review, that's a projection based on what we we currently think stemming from the pilot injection well and then moving into additional hydro geo modeling services and permitting services would be spent this year. And then seven hundred and ten thousand, that covers archaeological, cultural, biological, getting that, getting those facilities permitted through the regulatory agencies, again, would would really focus on that work this year, getting that work going and and trying to get into that as quickly as we can. And then four point four one, four point four million between program management services, which is external consultants like myself, and internal city costs for for other for city staff and other city consultants like legal and and other services. So that's how the twelve point three breaks down. And with that, I think now I can take questions.
Are we good, Greg?
Yes, Mayor.
So by the way, thanks, Paul, very much. Appreciate the comprehensive overview. That slide, if you don't have the slides, basically is staff report pages ninety eight and ninety nine, which gives you that breakdown. And then also has the fiscal year twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five estimates. In addition to that, which gets us from the current one forty four nine, basically, to the base, the new number of one fifty nine and some change. Just wanted to let people orient in case they don't have your slide deck handy. Thanks, Paul. Appreciate that comprehensive overview. We're going to take council questions or comments first, and then I'm going to open up public comment for the CIP projects and then also for the WRF budget requests as well. So who'd like to start us off? Councilmember Heller, see your hand, sir, please.
Uh, thank you, Mayor.
Perhaps, Paul, I don't, maybe you can move that slide. Go ahead and close your slide. Thank you, sir. Close that out. We can, then I can see everybody. Thank you. Perfect.
Great, thank you. Paul, so this obviously is a big jump in the in the budget, up to a hundred and sixty million approximately. I know you've put a lot of time in on this. How confident are you that this is it? This is what it's going to take to finish this project, based on the schedule that you've presented tonight and the other things you've talked about?
That's a great question. I'm as confident as anyone can be in this current climate. But I will say, because we are nearing the end of Wharf construction, because we're nearing the end, and when I say nearing the end, it's been a long journey up to this point. We have about six, seven months left of construction. As we better define and we we emerge from the delays that we've got, then I'm confident that the thinking that's gone into this budget is has been comprehensive. We'd have a lot of review. And so I have a high level of confidence that as far as Wharf and conveyance go, those, that's where we're going to land. We've we've conservatively estimated and conservatively budgeted the Wharf itself. Conveyance, we've we've got some, we've got good feel on that. Recycled water facilities, because that is out and because we don't know where the economy is going to go, where our labor and material escalation is going to go, that I'm a little more uncomfortable about. But for right now, what we, given what we know, the big swing in that number that would cause me to hesitate with answering your question there would be the the facility construction itself. We're carrying about five point seven million on that, and that could go up based on, as as City Manager Collins had indicated earlier, we're seeing twenty five percent per year in escalation, which is unprecedented. So that would be the number that would make me most uncomfortable.
Okay. And then in looking at your schedule, it looks like you're projecting that the piping project will be done substantially complete in November. Am I reading that correctly?
Yes, Anvil's given us a schedule that shows them done by the end of the year. However, that current schedule, because we haven't priced the RO facility modifications, there's some scope additions that could necessitate that to stretch out into early next year. It just depends on when we sequence that work. There's also some emergency storm drain repair that we're going to perform on Main Street before we get out of there and pave that whole area. So obviously, our focus is on getting that facility started up. And if that work stretches into next year, that would be out of scope from this. But as far as the the what what's in their original scope of work, end of the year is our is our date.
Okay. And then regarding the the recycled water facility project, the peer review of the modeling seems important to me. That required to, in order to determine your well locations?
It's not required. It's it's a prudent next step. It'd be a prudent step in in checking GSI's work. But GSI still remains in the driver's seat on that and developing the basis of design. This is just checking their work and getting some of their peers to look at what they've done.
So will you be getting that peer review in time to not delay the location locating the wells?
Yes, yes. Actually, met with GSI yesterday, got the steps down for the injection test, projected that out. And just if you don't mind, we'll walk around the block with me on that. It's we'll get the well drilled in July, complete that work and start the injection testing in probably late August. And then there's going to be a couple months of testing with that. So if we can get the peer review on, if we could get the peers on board in August, then they would be able to look at not just the back, you know, the backward look at the modeling done thus far, but also look at the basis of design and the and the analysis done based on the injection testing. So we, our our aim would be to get the peer review done and and get that work done by the end of the year.
Okay. And then what's, you talked about this, but what's driving the modification to the reverse osmosis equipment, the four hundred thousand dollars?
So when the city was negotiating the, okay, so that facility, when you when you treat water using reverse osmosis, is there's what we call reject water. So you basically, for every gallon you pump through a reverse osmosis membrane, you get so much rejected back. In other words, and it comes back as salt or brine, as we would call it. Well, that reject water goes to an outfall, it's the old power plant outfall. Discharges over by the rock. The regional board is directed city to stop doing that, stop utilizing that outfall and move that discharge to the the city's treated effluent outfall. And so that's going to require some piping modifications from that facility to move that discharge to the effluent line that we're constructing as part of the work.
Okay. At some point in time, I am going to want to know the cost per acre foot to produce the recycled water that comes from this whole IPR system. Just put that in the back of your, back of your notebook there, if you will. So it looks like the recycle project won't be done substantially complete, final completion, until March or April of twenty twenty five. Is that, am I looking at the schedule right?
Yeah, and and that last six months or so is the final permitting and acceptance, getting through the getting through the regulatory process to begin utilizing that system. So major construction, startup commissioning, et cetera, would be, at this point, we're we're projecting to be fall of twenty four.
Okay. And then looking at the budget update, when I look at this project, obviously, there have been a lot of bumps in the road, but the Wharf plant is pretty close to being substantially complete, it's just waiting to get connected. The piping project is ideally six months from substantial completion. And yet you're you're asking for an additional four million dollars in this proposed budget at a time when it seems to me that the management and staffing needs should be going down, not up. Can you explain what the basis of that four million dollar increase is?
Yeah, so the four million dollars is roughly broken down as we as we analyze that to about two, two point, two point two million dollars for next fiscal year, which completes construction. And then it was a forward projection of about a million in the next fiscal year, and then five hundred thousand dollars or four hundred thousand dollars in the final fiscal year of the of the window that we're budgeting for. What we did to develop that two million, which is obviously the biggest number and the one that we would be most certain about, would be we we took the, we we burn about three hundred thousand dollars a month right now on our construction management services, because we have inspectors on the ground, we've got management, we do a lot of financial analysis, we answer a lot of questions from the public, we answer a lot of, you know, we do a lot of that work, administrative work. So we've carried that same burn rate through the end of the year. And then we've looked at all our different tasks and estimated based, again, this is a high level budgeting exercise. We we will, we will be moving forward with an actual negotiation of our contract, our amendment with city staff over the next couple of weeks, because we need to get that amendment in place to continue. So from a budget development perspective, we did a lot of analysis of past expenditures and then forward projected based on schedule and then reduced burn rate going beyond. So we would be more confident in this initial number. And then the the subsequent numbers are projecting lower burn rates as based on our past experience. Each year, we we endeavor to underspend the contract. And so that what it ends up doing is that we we have a carryover into the next fiscal year. And then each year, we want to have gas left in the tank so that we're not coming back mid year for budget authorization. So this year, I think our projected, I think our projected carryovers is between is around eight hundred thousand to a million dollars.
Okay. And then my next question is is relative to city costs. So I don't know if this is Scott Collins or Greg Qualick question, or both of you, or one of you. But the, can you explain a little bit to me about the fourteen fourteen million dollar proposed city cost budget? And how many, how many, who's working, who isn't working on this project, is what I should say? Can you explain that breakdown to me a little bit? Who's doing what and how much of their time they're devoting to to this project?
Yeah, I don't, I'm not exactly sure of the fourteen million dollar number, but we, guys.
Excuse me, I just wanted to call, I think, Councilmember Heller, is that page ninety nine of the staff report?
This is the Wharf Program Budget Update and EAC is the title on.
I have to date city costs at five million, two forty six. If I'm reading it correctly, is that, Scott, is that correct?
That's a different slide.
Okay, so.
I'm looking at the slide, it's page fifty two of this.
On the slide deck?
Yeah, the slide.
Sorry. I don't, I don't have that.
I don't know what that corresponds to.
Yeah, I was trying, I was trying to match it up.
Yeah, sorry.
Paul, go ahead and let, there you go. City costs, let's see. Thirteen point one.
Oh, sure. Yeah, if we could, we could probably do some diagnostic on that to give more more input. But, you know, as as Greg mentioned earlier, that that's, you know, this is the biggest project that we've worked on. So and we'll work on for quite some time. So you you have several folks in utilities, you have myself, you have Public Works Director, you have Finance Director, City Attorney costs, so, yeah. But I'll let, I'll let Greg go on to that, yeah.
Yeah, and again, if you want a detailed accounting for this, we could, we can provide that. But this also includes our consultants that have worked with us throughout the project beyond Corolo. It includes Dan Heimel, it includes our legal costs, it includes permitting, it includes lab work. It includes electricity at the new plant and water at the new plant. There, there's actually a lot that gets worked into this number. And again, that's, it's not something I have all available in front of me at this time, but I can put that together.
Well, that's, I'm not really looking for details on that, Greg. I think that explains it sufficiently for the purpose of this meeting. So thank you for that. Those are my, those are my questions.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Ford, please.
Thank you, Mayor Herring.
And by the way, I just wanted to let folks know, I apologize. There are five to six other slides that will actually cover the budget and financing. So I know you may have questions, but we're going to have five or six more slides, I understand, and we'll cover that. So go ahead, Councilmember Ford.
Thank you. Yeah, no problem. Um, thank you, Mr. Amico. I appreciate your report and a lot of good questions from Councilmember Heller as well. And and so covered a few of the questions that I have. One that I still have is, you mentioned, you know, we had a CPI increase of over twenty four percent. And I'm just curious, in projecting, you know, the total cost of a close to a hundred and sixty million dollars, are we considering a similar CPI increase over the next year? Or we giving even more of a higher percentage just to give cushion, or how does that work?
So if I understand your question correctly, have we accounted in our contingency budgeting for potential, you know, cost increases and and those material increases? Those are going to be reflected in the the PCOS, the the potential change orders that we 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 carry right now. A lot of those are, they're known to the extent that if we've asked for the contractors to forward price something for us, then there's some change that either we've requested or we saw was coming, they would forward price it and we would be more certain around that. And that would, that would reflect current pricing of materials. And so, you know, if we've got a change, we are subject to that material price increase. However, you know, FPV's price is a is a guaranteed maximum, right? So we we shouldn't see those increases in work that they're going to be performing that was contract, that was their contract, same thing with with Anvil Builders. Again, I think, as I had said, the the, so in those, in those two components, we, I think we can, you know, we can hang our hat on those numbers. The the recycled water component, it it's a, it's an art. A lot of times, if I came in and I told you that we had a six million dollar facility, we're going to build it in a year and a half, and I told you we had to budget for forty percent increase, sometimes that's the first thing that hits the cutting room floor, right? I mean, that that number gets rejected all the time from our clients. And a lot of times they'll say, well, let's budget it, let's put in some escalation and then shrug and say, well, let's see where it goes. And that seems like cold comfort, but it's, 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 you know, as we better define these, as these, we bring the major construction to close and we can beef that contingency budget up, then that money would then shift to recycled water. So I hope I answered your question for that.
Yeah, you did. Thank you. And I didn't ask you very clearly, but you you totally got it. And then I have two more questions, and I don't know if there, you said there is additional slides coming, but.
Yeah, related to financing and the budget, so, yeah.
Yeah, so I will, I will hold off and wait for that. Thank you.
Just want to make sure that if anybody else has questions regarding what we've heard to date, otherwise we'll do the five or six other slides, maybe. Is that good to go? Okay. So Paul, are you doing that, or who might be doing this part?
I hope not.
That'll be me.
Okay. And what do we have? Is this, will this be the last piece before public comment?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, no problem. And sorry about that confusion. So.
Worries.
This is where Paul left off. Thanks, Paul. And now we'll just jump into the capital funding segment of this presentation. And this this segment will will close out the presentation for final questions. You know, I I think it's important to talk about this, because as as city council is considering how and and whether to fund certain projects or the entire capital plan as as proposed by staff, you probably want to know where where's the money coming from and what are the impacts going to be to our funds? So that's what this segment takes a look at. So just kind of a general look. We have, as mentioned, that investment, a proposed investment of eighteen point seven million dollars in capital projects and and equipment purchases. A big chunk of that, fifty one percent, coming from the sewer fund. And that's because of not only the Wharf program and and the increases in the Wharf program, but also those sewer projects that that were outlined earlier. Another big chunk is coming from the water fund at nineteen percent, also because of the Wharf program, but also because of the tank rehabilitation project and other Wharf, I'm sorry, other other one water projects that that we're working on. Then we have Measure Q and E coming in 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 third here at thirteen percent. And that's largely covering the pavement program as as well as other capital projects that were listed. And then finally, with with the and SRF loans at nine percent. So that's, that's kind of a breakdown. And stick into it a little bit. How are we doing with water and sewer cash flow? I've received council questions about this from our city council, from BAW, from members of the public. So with the with the increased cost of the Wharf, we do currently have twenty one million dollars that's not financed, meaning not financed through the SRF or the the WIFIA loans. So that is a challenge, not an insurmountable challenge, but it it is a challenge that staff. So that is a challenge, uh, not an insurmountable challenge, but it, it is a challenge that staff uh, is working on. Um, another challenge is that we have uh, very slow disbursements from uh, SRF. This is something we've talked about for quite some time. Um, it, it, we see it as uh, the double edged sword of, of getting cheap financing. It's that we, we kinda have to double pay sometimes, um, not double pay net, but um, pay, uh, submit for reimbursement from the loan, uh, wait and then pay new costs while we're still waiting for the cost from uh, to come back to us uh, from the, from the first request. So we're, we're kinda carrying money. Uh, the money eventually does come, just sometimes it takes a couple of months. And staff has to be pretty meticulous and careful about how we spend m- uh, money during those times. Uh, and then on the One Water side, uh, we have escalating costs. As I talked about earlier in the presentation, the plan was written in twenty eighteen. Um, and the, the, the cost estimates in there are quite low. As an example, the force main under um, Highway One by the Cloisters area, um, that replacement, the, the replacement of that force main was estimated to be eighty thousand dollars in the One Water plan. That was for design and construction. Uh, we're currently, we're estimating uh, four hundred thousand dollars. So we, we do see escalating costs. Uh, we have consistent double digit increases in the CCCI. Um, and then as projects uh, go into design in One Water, we've, we find obstacles and we have to come up with solutions for those obstacles. And oftentimes that, that represents some cost increases. Uh, just as an easy example, the nutmeg pressure zone. And initially, there, there was no consideration to eliminate the Alana tanks. Uh, but after um, engaging in the, in the design process, um, the Alana tanks were looked at. Uh, they're in terrible shape. Um, and it is just not an efficient thing to, to try to fix them. And because we, at this point can't, they're, they're in such bad shape, which means we have to increase the size of nutmeg tank. And we have to uh, take out the Alana tanks. So all of these things increase our costs. So what does that mean for the sewer and water fund? Because all, all of, all of these capital costs uh, from the WRF um, and the One Water plan ultimately come out of the sewer and water fund unless we're uh, able to secure grant funding. So I have here um, a snippet from some financial forecasts for the sewer and water funds that um, Sarah Johnson Rios, um, our Assistant City Manager had in her slides yesterday. Um, but the, the relevant piece uh, for this discussion is um, where are the ending balances in the sewer fund and the water fund uh, at the end of each fiscal year for the next five fiscal years? And uh, what, what is our position um, with regard to these capital projects? So these ending balances um, in these forecasts include all the capital costs. They include the new WRF costs, they include the new One Water costs. Um, they include operations and um, CPI increases for labor and things like that. So there's a lot of assumptions that go into them. This is kind of the, the high level overview. So if we take a look at the sewer fund, uh, the ending balance at the end of next fiscal year, uh, we forecast will be at around sixteen point two million. A year after that, about a million less. Um, it'll take something of a nosedive for two years and go to five million and then start working its way back up um, five years out uh, to eight point six million. So now, nobody wants to, you know, cut their savings account in, in half. So that's certainly not uh, ideal. But what this shows is that the sewer fund does survive these cost increases um, in terms of, you know, at, at least our, our current forecasting. Um, the water fund is, is a bit of a different story. So uh, the water fund, we start off at fifteen point two million ending balance in fiscal year twenty-three. Uh, we chop a million and a half off or so, and then again, a nosedive in twenty-five. Um, and then we sit in the red for a couple of years. Um, so this is obviously not desirable. And then the question becomes um, what to do about that now? Um, just, just wanna point out here, this is largely because uh, you know, again, I'm imagining you're, you're questioning, well, why, why does that happen? This is largely because in these years, um, that nutmeg pressure zone project, we are anticipating two nine million dollar slugs in back-to-back years just hitting this pump. Um, so you know, if, if we were to be able to find some cost efficiencies there, then we wouldn't necessarily be looking at th- these numbers, but that is based on our current estimate. Um, so you know, assuming that there are no cost efficiencies, what, what can we do about the situation? Well, staff uh, internally, we've talked through some strategies. Um, and the first one is obviously grants. Uh, grants represent money that we don't have to pay back. Uh, and so uh, I do wanna let city council know that we have been in coordination with um, Corolo and Confluence Engineering applying for grants aggressively. Um, in the past nine months or so, we've applied for over thirty-three million dollars in, in grant funds. Um, and just to give you a general overview, I won't go through in, these in too much detail, but we did receive five million dollars uh, in loan forgiveness through SRF. Uh, we did receive seventy-five thousand dollars uh, for uh, recycled water planning. And then we have a bunch of grants that have already submitted. We have two through the state, um, Water Resources Control Board um, for recycled water and wellfield rehabilitation, each just over ten million dollars. Um, some of these requests would represent new project costs. So it's not that, you know, if we got this grant that necessarily it would take ten million dollars off of, of the WRF, it, it could take seven million off the WRF and maybe three million are, are new costs. Um, but it would certainly um, give the uh, water fund some, some relief. Um, Title sixteen, I don't remember what WIN stands for. I believe it's Water Innovation, something, something. Um, a nine million dollar grant has already been submitted. That's through the United States Bureau of uh, Reclamation. We actually uh, already submitted a, a previous round. Um, we got some feedback on our grant application. Uh, and Corolo worked diligently to up, uh, to update that grant application and, and it was resubmitted. And uh, in my opinion, a much stronger application for nine million dollars. Then we have um, it's, it's state money, but it's administered through the county. Um, a two million or two and a half million dollar grant that we think we, we have a pretty good chance of uh, getting, if only because we, we don't have as much competition uh, with, uh, for example, the state or federal grants. So um, that grant is submitted and then we are um, currently under development for a well field rehab grant. So uh, staff will continue to explore grant opportunities and apply for them uh, when we think we are, we, when we think we are competitive. Uh, we also have um, a state and federal lobbyists that are, are on retainer that we work with. And they help advise us on these grants and they also assist sometimes in the grant writing process as well as the advocacy piece of it, which is very important in terms of getting letters of support from state uh, senators and um, assembly members as, as well as from um, US uh, congresspeople and senators. So uh, that's, that's the strategy one is, is grants. Strategy two, um, we have an option of seeking additional SRS financing, possibly at the same low interest rate as our current uh, SRF financing. Um, and that's something that staff is exploring with Corolo. Um, and again, if, if we, if we do get that, that will certainly relieve um, some of these um, fund balance i- issues here in, in these out years. And then finally, um, you know, we could just continue to finance with cash. Uh, as I mentioned, we have the twenty-one million dollars right now unfunded uh, in, in the WRF program. Uh, we could just finance that with cash and then slow down some of the One Water projects as needed. So uh, we could be strategic about that uh, as a worst case scenario. You know, in, in terms of like granular cash flow issues month to month, we, we have other options. Um, so you know, we don't actually anticipate being in the red. Um, you know, we, and I, I won't even go into those unless there's questions about them. But um, that's just uh, what, what the city thus far has developed as strategies for, for dealing with the potential of the water fund uh, to go into the red in, in four or so years. So um, I have received uh, questions about uh, you know, what has, where has the money gone? Uh, for, for lack of a better question, I, I've, I've heard that. Um, you know, the, the, the WRF program is costing more and the One Water projects, there's no progress. Uh, so what, what happened? Well, I'd like to bring your attention back to the earlier part of the presentation uh, where we talked about the different um, phases of capital projects. And, and it, indeed, we, we have been making progress on the One Water projects. We just aren't in construction in all of them. We're in construction in, in one of them. And we have design complete on um, another and also on a stormwater project that we're hoping to go out to bid soon on. Um, so that's one part of the answer. The, the other part is um, you know, the city did a couple of rate increases. Um, I, I don't, I don't remember the years, I'm sorry, I, I wasn't here for that. But uh, the, the question is what, what happens to those rate increases? Where is that money? Well, the rate increases um, generate revenue and they directly support the WRF, uh, the One Water projects and, and the city's water and sewer operations. I mean, the, the revenues from sewer and water rates go directly into the sewer and water operating funds and, and reserve funds. So um, they are all there. Um, that's part of the reason why, for example, with the sewer fund, um, we, we don't, we aren't going into the red is because we had a, a, a healthy fund balance going in, in part due to tho- those Prop two eighteen increases. Um, but also again, um, that money from the Prop two eighteen increases is in our fund balance and is available to us and being spent by the city on the priority projects um, adopted by city council, such as the WRF and the One Water project. So I did wanna clear that up and I understand there may be questions about that, so I'd be, I'd be happy to answer those. But I believe that's my last slide, so let's see here. Yes, uh, so we're now at the question slide. Um, and I just wanna say thank you so much to City Manager Scott Collins, um, Assistant City Manager Sarah Johnson Rios and her team Emily and Kelly. Um, also folks on my team, Damaris, uh, Joe Miller, uh, Eric Rideo, Janine Burlingame, who really stepped up and all got involved um, in, in our budget process. And of course, thank you to city council and to the mayor uh, for hearing our presentation now. And I look forward to your questions about our capital budget request.
Hey, thank you Greg and uh, Paul and everybody else involved in um, preparing the presentations. Um, extremely com- comprehensive, probably um, maybe even difficult for some of our viewers out there that aren't in the middle of this every day like some of us are. But maybe I can ask questions since I haven't had a chance yet. And I'll get to you, Councilmember Ford, my apologies, um, to help frame it. And I don't know if we have, I guess we have Sarah with us, good. And I see you're here Greg still. So um, the, the first question I'll have is, I have is our original budget of some hundred and twenty-six million on the WRF project. Um, if I recall correctly, or could you just summarize for me, Ms. Johnson Rios, very quickly, what the uh, funded amounts were from WFI, um, which was at zero point nine percent? And uh, or SRF at zero point nine and WFI at zero point eight seven percent? What those total amounts were that were awarded?
I'm coming.
The total.
There we go. The total that we currently have financed between WFI and SRF, uh, including that five million dollar forgiveness is um, just under a hundred and thirty-nine million dollars.
So I'll just, I'll round it off at a hundred and forty, which, which is a delta of, um, as Greg showed, um, about twenty, twenty-one million dollars. Um, what remainder uh, possibility do we have to get from SRF? In other words, we were actually awarded funding at a higher rate. Um, and um, we initially took um, less than the total amount that we could have with options, I think, to also ask for more. Could you tell me what the remaining amount potentially is that we might be able to access at that great rate? And what the process is and how we're moving towards trying to secure that?
Sure, it's likely more than the um, budget delta. So um, we do have the opportunity to seek an, a loan amendment from SRF for the full um, the full twenty-one million dollar delta at this point. Uh, and the process for doing that is um, rather lengthy, uh, which is why we've assumed that, uh, we've, we've run our scenarios on the basis um, of, you know, if the city had to cash fund that, could we do so? Um, and unfortunately, the answer is yes. Um, so the process would entail going to um, SRF and we're working with their staff now to identify exactly how soon we could start that process. Um, and so depending on the response to those questions from their staff, um, we would start as soon as possible and it's likely a six to nine month process. That would, the city would have to go, undergo an updated credit rating, et cetera. Um, and we would be able to access that additional low interest financing.
So um, being the good uh, financial manager that you are, you would never budget for something you don't have? And I assume you've not done that in this budget or made the assumption that you could attain that?
That's correct.
Correct, and so um, tough to answer, but what do you think the likelihood is of getting uh, further funding from SRF?
It is tough to answer because uh, when, when you direct the question to them, it, it's not a guarantee of um, of funding. And so it depends on their program funding availability at the time. Um, we think that it is, it is hopeful and certainly the project costs are eligible. Um, it's also common that they're seeing many other cities have similar project cost increases. So it's common for cities to go back and request amendments. Um, all of those are in our favor, but there's, there's really no guarantee until we go through that amendment process.
Good, and so again, as a good budget manager, not making that assumption, but it's because it's not a, a bird in hand, so to speak. Um, um, if it were, it would change dramatically the twenty-six, twenty-seven um, water fund um, balance. Would you agree?
It would certainly change it. Um, the, the water fund uh, contribution to the WRF project is approximately that thirty percent. And then the sewer fund is approximately seventy percent. Um, that is something that we could reevaluate based on the updated uh, costs and project scope. And um, so that's one option that we have to look at. The other factor that's driving the, the water fund balance, as Mr. Qualick outlined, is the other very costly One Water projects. Um, one or two of which in particular have increased in, in cost significantly. Um, so we would, we would have to balance all of those factors.
Good, thank you. And that was the next point I was gonna make in terms of the overall impacts on the water and sewer fund. Um, the, this One Water plan and the projects, Greg, that you outlined, um, the, the accelerator and/or um, the CCI of twenty-four point five percent. And now the real cost of those projects, um, you said have gone up dramatically. Can you give me a magnitude?
Yeah, well, this as an example.
Doubled, tripled, or?
Yeah, with the nutmeg pressure zone project, uh, that one, according to what we initially thought it was going to cost as a city, has quadrupled.
Quadrupled, okay, thanks. I was trying to remember what that was. And so the real impacts on, on costs are, are the, the um, twenty-one million dollar um, delta in the WRF, correct? And then the impacts on the One Water plan. And I'm just talking about for the next fiscal year, um, given the assumptions that you've made, will there be any impact on water sewer rates to our rate pairs? Do you see a need for an increase in the next, this budget period that we're talking about right now?
Yeah, i- if you're asking me, I.
Uh, either.
Yeah, the, the, the answer is no for this coming fiscal year. I, I would just like to make a plug and it's a, it's a drum that I, I've been beating. But in other jurisdictions um, that run uh, water and sewer programs, um, there are like regular CPI um, escalators for water and sewer rates. Um, and that, that does a few things. Uh, one is that you have just kind of regular small incremental increases to keep up with costs. Um, because right now we have a situation with water and sewer. And I, I recognize, Mayor, that this is totally off topic with your question, but, but that uh, our, our costs go up, but our revenues stay the same. Um, and, and that uh, is not a best practice model. Um, and then what happens is when the city does need to increase rates, um, you know, nobody wants to do that. That's not a, a popular thing to do, including staff. And we don't want to raise people's rates. But what happens is then when we do need to raise them, we, we have to raise them big to, to catch up. And so a best practice is to have those smaller uh, rate increases as other cities uh, in the county and around the state do.
Thank you, I'm aware, I'm aware of that. And um, I, I really wanted to talk about current impacts because I think people are concerned right now. But I would absolutely agree with you. It would be ludicrous of us to think that the rates that we have now are gonna last forever and always fund all the capital needs for both the water and sewer program. That's what you're saying. But what I, what I'm really asking is, you, I don't see, perhaps you could correct me if I'm wrong, any impacts on rates, given what you're presenting here for the next fiscal year and perhaps the next fiscal year after that, given the projections that you've made.
Yes, that's the conclusion I come to based on the forecasts.
Great, and, and the other thing is, is this, this council, as you know, in the past has had real concerns about, and, and this isn't a criticism of any of you directly, real concerns about the timeline for completion of CPI projects. And what I'm hearing today, and this is a question, with the resources that you have now, can we expect um, faster, uh, more efficient and perhaps more time? and perhaps more timely completion of projects? Given the fact that you have almost adequate, and I didn't say totally adequate because they're never totally adequate, but fairly adequate resources now because of the upstaffing that's occurred?
Yes, and specifically if we're comparing to the production of capital projects, let's say in the past three or four years, then I would say yes.
Great. Hey, great job on the very, very comprehensive presentation. Appreciate that. Paul, thank you as well. And I will go to Councilmember Ford. Thanks for letting me get my financial questions in. Go ahead, Jen.
Oh, thank you. Actually, you asked so eloquently two of my three questions. So I'm left with about $33 million in grants that we've applied for as a city. As we've seen with the WIFI alone, there was a lot of strings attached. I understand the loan, we're talking grant money here. But I'm not sure if this would be a Mr. Collins' question, or Mr. Raulik, or Ms. Johnson-Rios. But within those applications, are there any strings attached that could cost us money in order to achieve those grants?
It's a good question. And Greg probably expand on what I have to say. You know, with, some of the money comes with the bipartisan infrastructure law that was passed by Congress last year and signed by the president. There's some components related to Buy America and some other components that, you know, may increase some of the costs or create potential delays. But it's a small fraction compared to the overall benefit. And in some cases, you know, they want to see additional enhancements to projects to sort of tightly fit within the competitive nature of the applications. And so sometimes they want to see little enhancements. But again, that's a small fraction compared to the overall plus for the existing components of the project that may be funded. So each one's a little different in that regard. No money comes with no strings attached. This was identified by our program manager earlier, both WIFI and SRF had additional requirements above and beyond what was, would have been the normal project. But of course, we get, instead of a 3.5 or 4% interest rate, or maybe higher, we have a 0.9% or lower interest rate, which is saving, you know, will save us $2 million plus a year in debt payments over 30 plus years. So that's, you know, 60 plus or more million dollars saving our community. So it's, there's some trade offs, of course, with that.
Good answer. Thank you, Mr. Collins. I have another question, and this I should have asked earlier, I think. But I think it kind of applies to the overall work project. But we're talking about a lot of costs that have gone into this project and future costs. But I'm just curious if one of our staff members has an idea, or even maybe Mr. Amico has an idea of the economic benefit that we've had for this project happening over time with, you know, we have Corilla, we have Vanville, we have all these different companies that are bringing in labor and also using local labor here. Have we seen an uprise in economic benefits of any kind? That any of you would be able to shed light on, or?
Yeah, I think Paul has more concrete information on this. So I'll turn to him for that.
Thanks, Scott. As you know, Scott, I actually owe you this information. And I, I did not pull that together for this meeting. We do have that. In many of our grant applications, we are required to define that economic benefit that the communities would oftentimes get from. And it's not easy to measure. It's a, it's not something somebody can go and point to. But, you know, there's a general philosophy that in a lot of these, particularly on the central coast, when we bring in out of town contractors, they do a lot of, they expend a lot of effort to bring in local labor. And they do bring a lot of local labor out of the Union Hall. And there's a lot of that. But there are also a lot of guys that come in from out of town that have to do that. That is a number that City Manager Collins had asked me to generate. And we have it, it's in my inbox. But I unfortunately, that was a miss on my part, unfortunately. But I will definitely follow up with that as you all are contemplating and get a, adopt your budget as you go forward. I acknowledge that was a miss on my part.
No worries. Maybe just add in that next report or whatever, if you can. I would just love to hear, I always love to hear like some positives. Because, you know, there is a lot of like, oh my gosh, when we read all these huge numbers. And it's a lot of stress, but it's always good to have some feel-good moments as well to know what benefits there have been on, you know, in all this, during this project. So thank you, Paul, I appreciate it. And I really, I think the mayor asked all the other questions that I had. So I'm good. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Councilmember Ford. Other questions? Councilmember Heller, yes?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Sure.
A question for Greg. I'm looking at the sewer and water fund forecast where you have the balance of the funds, the sewer and water funds through FY '27. Is this, are the negative numbers in the water row, are those based on you completing the projects that you currently have in construction? Or is that based on the other projects that you have lined up that you want to do, the One Water Projects? Do you understand my question?
Yeah, by, I'm sorry, I was on you. By lined up, do you mean new projects that we haven't yet talked about? Or do you mean the projects that are in the fiscal year '22, '23 budget?
Yeah, I'm just wondering what those, what those numbers represent.
Yeah. Go ahead. Yeah, it's a good question and an important one because it's kind of key to understanding this chart. This includes all capital requests. So it includes ones that were in construction now, right? Because that would be reflected in the ending balance in fiscal year '23 as we spend money to complete those projects. And it includes the ones, not only that we're requesting for this coming fiscal year, but those projects, if they have expected costs in the out years, those numbers are in here as well. And that's why the Nutmeg Pressure Zone projects, I believe in fiscal year '25 and '26. And by the way, the city council and members of the public can see this in our online budget book. We have like $9 million estimated for each of these fiscal years. And that's why these, the water fund in particular takes such a hit is because of that Nutmeg Pressure Zone. So yes, it is all included in these forecasts here.
Okay. And then my second question is if, if we were able to build the water reclamation facility for the original budget of $126 million, would we have negative fund balances in the out years? In the water or sewer fund?
That's certainly not an analysis that we've run. Sarah Johnson-Rios made a good point that the water fund pays for about 30% of the WRF costs. So, you know, I would imagine that we would be in a better position in both funds if the project cost less. But, you know, I'd want to run that forecast before answering definitively where we would be.
Okay. And then the more general question is if, for example, worst case scenario, we don't get any of the grant funding that we're requesting, do, how, is there some way we can finish the project? Do we have cash for that?
Yes, so that goes back to the strategies. So if the grants don't work out, then the other step, which frankly, we plan on exploring concurrently with grants is additional SRF financing. Because it does take some time to secure that financing. So we want to get started on that sooner or later. If we can finance parts of the project, it'll have a smaller impact on our annual budget. But we can have the money upfront to pay for the work. So this, this situation here would be corrected if we also take a second look at the distribution of the WRF project between the sewer and water funds, as Sarah Johnson-Rios mentioned.
Okay, so I guess the front burner action at this point is to start those applications and get into that, jump into that six to nine month processing timeline, right?
Yes, it's what we're exploring.
Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Heller. Any other questions or comments? Greg, could you take down that slide so I can see hands? Thank you, sir. All right, I don't see any. So thank you all, good questions. And it is time for public comment. This is public comment for item number two on our agenda this evening. This is a public comment only for this item this evening. And so Highland, do we have any public comments, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do not have any raised hands in the queue.
Okay, I'll close public comment, bring it back to us. And just to ask if there are any other comments. If not, we'll move to the Harbor Department budget presentation. Good to go? Looks like it, okay.
Mayor, I'm not sure if we, Dana, maybe, or Chris, do we need to take direction or get input from council on item two before jumping to Harbor? Sorry to interrupt you, Mayor, I just wanted to.
What I see is provide feedback prior to budget adoption. And I, I can summarize the feedback for you. There were no.
Oh, that's fine. If that's what you'd like to do, or if you, I mean.
Well, I can do that for you. There were no substant, there were no changes in the dollar values that anybody had recommended. What I did get was, hopefully you guys have taken notes, the pavement striping and markings somehow to be incorporated into your plan and to come back and report on that. People were concerned about that. And then secondarily, routine CIP updates for the council. And Greg, you know, maybe along a quarterly basis or maybe with midterm budget, getting an update on projects and our progress. And then coming back, excuse me, as you get information on funding sources, to come back and report to us, obviously, which I think you're going to do anyway, on a routine basis so we can understand if we've gotten grants to offset some of this and/or increased SRF funding, et cetera, et cetera. Those were the big three that I captured, so.
Got it.
I missed any? Okay.
Maybe just one, Mayor?
Yes, yes, please.
There is a little bit of discussion about equitable attention to the entire city and how we can address.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, and that was on the pavement plan, correct?
On the pavement. I don't know if that's.
And, and, no, thank you for that reminder. I appreciate that. And I think Mr. Riddell hopefully got that. Eric, did you get that?
Yes, and Mayor, on that, we could address that question during the presentation of the city council on pavement management generally.
Great, great. Yeah, and that's what I had. That was a pavement management update. Great. Thank you, Don, I appreciate it. Okay, that brings us to, let me get my notes here. Item two, this is Harvard Department Budget Global Overview. This is a receive and file. And I'm going to turn it over, I believe, to Mr. Collins?
Yeah, we can start there. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
And Greg, if you wouldn't mind, could you share the presentation again? I think you have the second part. If you're gone, then, okay, sweet. And advance it to the, yeah.
Scott, we're going to get this all at once, is that correct? We're not cutting this up?
Oh, it looks like Greg didn't have that one. Eric, you?
Yeah, I've got mine for sure.
Okay, great, thanks. Go ahead and stop sharing, Greg, my apologies. All right, well, I'll go ahead and introduce the item. Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember.
God, I'm just going to ask that this is going to be all inclusive? We're not going to stop?
Yeah, there's not, it's not.
Just checking, great, thank you.
Good question, thank you. Yeah, but just briefly, you know, council had asked several months ago for kind of a bigger update on kind of the global picture of our Harbor Department and understanding the various sources of revenue and how we're able to or unable to meet operation and capital needs. So Eric, in his, pulled together a PowerPoint that, in a staff report that you've hopefully have read, that sort of gives the high points on where revenue comes from, some of the challenges that the Harbor Department's experienced in trying to meet both its operational imperatives, but also all the waterfront infrastructure needs that are becoming more and more apparent with the wearing away from the weather. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Industry or Harbor Director to give a presentation and look forward to your questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott, and thank you, Eric.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, and good evening to you all. So let me share my screen. And while I'm popping it up, I'm just going to say that my presentation is going to seem a little bit like Mayberry RFD compared to Greg's NCIS.
He always comes up with, where do you come up with these things?
I don't know. I just do. All right, but I learned how to, thanks to Sarah, I learned how to use the little pointer thing. So like, like the city manager said, this is kind of a 30,000 foot overview of the Harbor budget and, you know, how it works and where it comes from and what some of the challenges are. So as we know, we're a state legislated title and trust, we're an enterprise zone that includes, you know, the waterfront, bay, beaches, you know, everything within the trust zone managed by the Harbor Department. Sort of the three legs of the stool are public safety and public access, lease and property management, that's all the businesses on the waterfront, capital improvement program and maintenance and repair. And sort of the statement, what's generated in the trust stays in the trust, that's by law. It's an enterprise fund zone, we need to spend the money generated down here, here. And we do. And for the first time ever in this current fiscal year, and hopefully next, the city council's been good enough to allocate some of the sales tax revenues to our fund. Where in the past, it's all been revenues, you know, generated from, from the waterfront leases and boating type activities. So pre-2008, you know, pre-economic crash of 2008, our revenues relatively comfortably exceeded expenses. You know, we put away a couple hundred, few hundred thousand a year, depending on the year, that went into our accumulation fund, that went into our piggy bank to fund the big capital projects in addition to funding all the operations. Post-2008, you know, and in the years that followed, that whole equation really flipped. The cessation of the power plant revenues, that was 275,000. So there's an eighth of the budget right there that disappeared in the course of a year. The growing purse on funded liabilities that we've been grappling with over several years now. And then greatly increasing operational costs, as you all know. You know, in the wintertime sidewalks would roll up at 5:00 PM, there'd be nobody around. That doesn't occur anymore. Our operational costs have increased dramatically because of the increased use of the town and the bay and the beaches and everything else. So we've just not been able to keep up with that from a revenue standpoint. So the Harbor Fund's been, been really challenged to meet its operational and capital needs. And so that's what we've been trying to solve over the last few years. From a revenue standpoint, in the upcoming budget '23, we're looking at about 2.36 million in revenues. Percentage wise, it's almost 80% from our master leases, which represent about 90 businesses along the waterfront. About 18% comes from boating fees or slip fees, piers, moorings, little boards, all those various boating related stuff. Then about 4% or 5% from all the other miscellaneous sources, shower money, fines and that sort of thing. But the vast majority obviously comes from our leases. Well, we've seen record lease revenues and, you know, early in the pandemic year of 2020, we thought, you know, the sky was going to fall and through the pandemic, it really turned around during that summer and we saw record lease revenues largely because visitation increased because everyone was going to, and not, you know, overseas. So that's backed down a little bit. I think that's going to level off a little, but we're still going to see record high revenues because Morro Bay's on the map. People have really discovered this area and we're starting to see it, so. But the waterfront's largely at its carrying capacity. We're seeing some development that'll help, like TLC, you know, the old off the hook site. It's now going to have hotel and restaurant retail, those sorts of things have incrementally brought our revenues up, but largely without some major redevelopment of the waterfront or new growth on the waterfront, which is really not room for it because we just don't have it. We're pretty well tapped out on our leases. And sales tax and measured Q and A allocations, you know, those relieve the Harbor operating budget of a fair amount of money for this year's budget lifeguard program and trash disposal. So those aren't costs that are borne by the Harbor Fund. So it relieves the Harbor Fund and that helped a lot. And so we'll see how that works in the coming years. On the expense standpoint, we're about 2.27 million. So the delta there, about 90,000. If you have any questions on that later and where that delta comes from and how that can be, you know, helped, I guess, maybe Sarah's got some more input on the overall numbers of where the budget balanced out this year. Personnel, of course, we're a city and we supply services. So vast majority of our costs are services, about 55%. We're six full-time people. We're not too many years ago, we used to be eight. As the city manager alluded to before, and I think as you all know, we are strapped. We're trying to do more than we've ever done before with less people than we've ever had. Center for Organizational Effectiveness, TCFOE's, got an organizational assessment underway to look at our department and how to move it into the future from a staffing standpoint. to look at our department and how to move it into the future from a staffing standpoint, but also from an operational and service standpoint. And so that project should conclude in the next couple of months and we'll bring that forward to City Council for next steps as that, that whole process pairs out. Supply and service costs have grown substantially. Inflation, as you know, I mean, you heard it from, from Greg and Eric, you know, just the cost of stuff has gone up ridiculously amount, but the demand on our services, there are so many more people using the bay, flushing the toilets, emptying the trash, just to repair and upkeep, calls for service have really increased. So that's, that's been putting a real strain on our, on our resources. So the operating fund, like I said earlier, is balanced to the tune of about $90,000, but it goes negative when you add the capital needs. In that vein, Harvard Capital, we've identified approximately about 800,000 per year over the next 10 years to do the stuff that we should be doing to all our infrastructure, pier slips, the things that both generate revenue and the things that don't, like restrooms and, you know, overlooks and just public stuff. Currently in this year's budget, we've got half of the beach street slip replacement funded at 600,000. North Deep Pier needs about $308 million of work that we applied for congressional earmark spending for. And if you hadn't heard, Congressman Carver Hall has taken up 1.5 million of that and is putting it in his congressional request, which will go a long way. Hopefully that'll survive the federal budgeting process, but we'll see. And then, as you heard earlier, Greg's presentation, we're proposing 210 million or 210, which is 210 million, 210,000 for the boat launch facility, ramp and float replacement. That's just for planning and permitting to get basically a shovel-ready project to replace those critical pieces of infrastructure which need it to apply for grant funding from DBW and hopefully we can get that project back on the books. So that's really just a start on the tip of the proverbial iceberg in terms of our infrastructure. As Greg said earlier, there's a $400,000 needs assessment for the whole city that includes harbor that'll really take a closer look at this $800,000 estimate. And inflation will, of course, affect this all as well. You know, these numbers that we have now, we're, we're sort of pre-inflationary. You know, talking to Paul Gill of Associated Pacific, you know, the waterfront stuff has gone up just as much as everything else. So I'm sure we'll be looking at that as well. So despite the record revenues, we still got the challenges that remain that we need to address. The organizational assessment and how we'll move into the future, how our department will be structured and staffed, including service levels. Collaboration with Public Works, we really see the, you know, we, from a, from a capital and maintenance standpoint, we've largely sort of been an island of ourselves to deal with, you know, all the capital programs and projects where really we should be having Public Works do that stuff because that's what they do. We'd have to fund them, of course. It doesn't come for free. It comes through the cost allocation, but it really makes more sense for Public Works and, and their facilities people to do the vast majority of our maintenance and CIP jobs. So we've been investigating that and see how that might work. And then the pension liabilities are, are a, you know, a big factor that are not going to go anytime soon. So you know, like I said, we're looking good on revenues, but it's not solved yet. Grants and other funding is going to help, but it's not the overall answer. Friends of the Harvard Department, you know, they kicked in a big chunk of funding for our boat replacement. Obviously, that stuff helps and we're grateful for that, but it's still not going to solve the problem. So, you know, what are some of the answers? You know, we're looking at some of them right now. Paid parking, you know, I think Scott talked about that a little bit earlier. Questions from the council. Measures Q and E have helped a lot, and I think that's going to have to be a part of the future. And there's a community tax initiative that you know qualified for the ballot, so we'll see where that goes. Other possible actions? Well, the, the, you know, service cuts, you know, obviously that, you know, personnel being our, our biggest thing, that's something you got to look at. And the TCFOE, we'll be looking at that in terms of, you know, service needs and what some of the recommendations may be there. And they're looking hard at efficiencies as well. There'll also be, I think they're going to have some revenue suggestions that come out of their, out of their study, but they're also looking pretty hard at deficiencies and, and things that we can do better and more efficiently to, to save money. So we'll see what comes with that. And then potentially divert additional measures, measure funding to the harbor fund or other unrestricted general fund capital project funding. A lot of the general fund projects, a lot of the capital projects have restricted funding. They have to be used for very specific things and couldn't necessarily come down to harbor, but there are some other things that possibly could. So, you know, I think the city's really going to have to look at that stuff hard and see if that's one of the answers. We're not recommending any council action on any of these things right now. We've kind of thrown out some potential revenue sources identified and we'll welcome any input on those, but really, I, you know, I just kind of want to lay this overview out here, and I know this isn't an untold story, but hopefully we keep telling it and, and we're addressing it and getting some good attention on it. So I want to echo Greg's thanks to, you know, to, to the city manager, Scott and his leadership and Sarah and everything they've done. We took a brand-new program, you know, a budgeting program and, and implemented it. It was, it was not easy. You know, I'd like to thank all my staff, Lori, who helped me on that. It was a challenge and so it's, it's moving along well and it's looking pretty good. So we'll see where this all goes. Questions?
Hey, Eric, thank you so much. Could you unshare your screen so I could see all these wonderful hands? It'll be coming up. Thanks, sir.
Stop my share.
Appreciate your presentation and we, we, we've heard the story a number of times now and it's kind of a sad story, actually. Not, not you, sir, but just the, the kind of the state of, of finances, but I'm going to open it up for comments or questions. And Councilmember Heller, sir, I do see your hand. Please.
Thank you, Mayor. And Eric, thank you for that Mayberry RFD report. Nothing wrong with it.
I have my one bullet.
That's, that's nothing wrong at all. I have a question about the slip replacement project where you've got 600K, I believe, budgeted this year for that, for replacing half of the slips. So is that in design or in construction or has it been awarded or what's the status of that project?
I wish it was further along. You know, in previous fiscal years, we've done some engineering on that. So we've got some of the design work, actually a fair amount of the design work done in, in previous fiscal years for that set of slips. I've just not had the capacity to, to get it going any further. I've started working with Greg and to a lesser extent Eric on, on their help on that as they've started to come out from under the wharf a little bit and get some capacity to do that, but they're still, you know, fully engaged in that. So we'll be looking at hiring a project manager here as soon as I can get a little bit of breathing room and, and get going on getting that scoped out and out to bid.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. And thank you again for the report. I think it was very clear and concise and no surprises there from what I can see.
Trying not to surprise you.
Thanks. Thanks a lot.
Thanks, Councilmember Heller. Other questions or comments? Councilmember Ford, yes, please.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Endersby. I, I really, I just, I want to thank you guys for all that you do. And as you said, your workload just increases more and more every year. I mean, our marketing, you know, we're doing a great job here in Morro Bay, getting people here, but with that, it, you know, comes a cost. And that cost is that you guys are working, you know, leaps and bounds more than, than you, you should for what you make and I, and I appreciate it. I do have a question and I don't even know, I don't know that you could really answer this, but just curious. If, if the citizens initiative for the parcel tax were to pass, would that, is that enough to cover, do you think that would be enough to cover? Or keep, I would say the Harvard fund from going into the negative? Is it 2025 is when we're deemed to be in the red? I guess that would be a question probably for city staff, but you know, I'm just curious if that, the projected income from that tax, would that, would that help us enough to cover those costs or would we still have to figure out and get creative on bringing in more revenue in some other way?
I believe the estimated revenue from that is in the $650,000 range. Scott, you got it?
Yeah, that, that sounds about right. I haven't, we haven't really done, yeah, we've done the deep dive on that. I think the mayor's right. It's probably around 600,000, but there is an escalator in there, I believe. So yeah, I, that would obviously make a huge dent in the capital needs. And as Eric mentioned, there's other sources there. For instance, council, if the budget moves forward as, as, you know, developed it would have Measure E support for harbor, which would be the, again, this, this would be just the second year that the city sort of offered general fund revenues, if you will, to the Harbor Enterprise Fund. For obvious reasons, they, they need help. You know, and so that, if initiative like that were to pass, it would be a huge help to be able to maintain not only the operations, but begin, you know, serious investment in infrastructure. So if you couple that with Measure E and, and paid parking, you know, we, we don't want to, you know, hint that that's a cash cow because that's not what it's intended to do, but we anticipate when it's, if it becomes, you know, goes forward and is fully matured, there would be potential revenue that could support adjacent infrastructure like the Harbor Walk or those viewing areas or parking lots down there that need to be upgraded.
Okay, thank you. And the reason I ask that is because, you know, whether or not that passes, we, you know, just thinking, looking forward and, and realizing that, you know, we really do need to generate more revenue for our harbor and our waterfront and just, I'm looking forward to getting creative. And I know that we already have started that process. You know, you've got paid parking on the horizon and, and some other things in the works, but just, I appreciate our, our citizens for getting creative and coming up with the initiative. But I also appreciate all the work that our staff does and our community to help support. And I think if anything, Mr. Endersby, what I have seen in the past six months is an overwhelming amount of outpouring of love for our harbor department and, and the work that you do and the appreciation and more often than not, when I have conversations with people, it's like, you know, what are we doing to support the harbor department? They need more support. And, and so I just, I just want to give kudos to you and, and your staff and thank you. So that's, I don't really have any other questions. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Ford, and thanks for those positive comments. Appreciate our staff very much. Comments or, or questions from anybody else? Sarah, if you're here. A lot of, a lot of times, I should say, a number of times, I've had some constituents ask me, well, isn't the Harvard Department part of the general fund and why doesn't the general fund just pay for items associated with the harbor? Could you just explain for our public what an enterprise fund is and, and, and how that, you know, affects the harbor and how that's different from the general fund, just for an educational standpoint?
Sure, sure. Yeah, so an enterprise fund is a fund that is self-sufficient essentially. It's funded by revenues or, or rates, in the case of water and sewer, that are directly associated with what that fund expends money on. So as Mr. Endersby described, the, the lease revenue from the tidestones trust area is then reinvested in the, the oversight of the tidestones trust area itself. So that, that is the scope of the Harbor Enterprise. The general fund, as I, as I know council is aware, but for any public community listening, is an unrestricted source of funds. And so it is council's purview what to spend general fund dollars on. And similarly, Measure Q and E has identified council priorities, but no legal restrictions. And so that's where those priorities have allowed the Measure Q and E fund to, in the last two years, help support the, the harbor fund operations.
The, and thank you for that. I appreciate that. And again, that's for a number of public folks that have asked about, you know, hey, why isn't the general fund just subsidize it or, or put more dollars towards it? The other question I had revolves around the issue with questions I get, well, if the primary source of revenue supporting the harbor and potentially harbor capital improvements is leasehold payments or payments from the businesses that lease, have ground leases or master leases with the city. Why couldn't we just increase the rate by 50% to cover our expenses? What would be the impact of that? And, and I'll let you answer it in your own words.
I'll, I'll, I'll let Mr. Endersby take that, that one first as he, he manages the leases.
Well, the, the easiest answer is there, we're in legal contract with all those leaseholders and we can't just unilaterally increase them.
That's it. You got it?
That's it.
Yeah, and, and, and if you were able to do that, perhaps increasing it by 50% would put them out of business. Perhaps.
Perhaps.
Yeah, perhaps.
I mean, we could try and go in and negotiate something more, but.
Yeah. So, and then the other thing I, I heard, I think I heard you say is that you have gone in the past from eight FTEs, full-time equivalent employees, to six.
Correct.
Is that correct now? And the, the magnitude of workload, has it decreased?
Oh, it has not.
Oh, okay, yeah.
No, it's only increased.
It's increased fairly significantly. So you're doing more with less resources.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I looked at the ACFER, which is the, let's see, Annual Consolidated Financial Report for the city, which gives historical data and for the Harvard Department. Your revenues have increased 0.4, 0.4% over 10 years. If you look back 10 years and look at today, the increase has only been 0.4%, which is literally nothing. Your expenses have gone up 4% in 10 years, which is really literally nothing. So you've held the line on expenses. Yet your revenue streams have, have declined over 10-year period. And would you agree with me that that's not a sustainable business model?
I would agree.
Obvious point, right. And, and that, that doesn't even include the ability to fund any capital improvements, which I believe you said are about, your estimate is about 600 to $800,000 a year.
Yeah, for the next 10 years.
And am I right in assuming that in the future, and it may be the far-out future, that because of sea level rise, we have a, an adaptive management plan that will greatly impact the harbor in the future in terms of costs associated with implementing that adaptive management plan? Is that correct?
I would assume there's going to be a cost to doing sea level rise adaptability. Some of it's going to be borne on our leaseholders because they own and operate that property, but there's plenty other stuff that we'll be responsible for.
Right. And so at the end of the day, I know you're doing an organizational, or we're having a consultant do an organizational assessment, but, but there's really an opportunity and a need to greatly improve the revenues of the Harvard Department. Not only to fund routine operations, but to improve the capital or, or provide the capital that's needed for capital improvement projects. And I'm going to ask this specifically to Mr. Collins. And, and I'm not disrespecting any other area of the city when I ask this question, but if our economic engine is tourism, would it be fair to say that one of the biggest draws in terms of tourists coming to Morro Bay not only includes our beach, but our Embarcadero?
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that. In fact, it's the number two most visited. If sometimes, well, with the, the Castle of North being shut down for the last two years, it probably is the number one visited destination in Slow County. That doesn't mean that the people come and stay here, but that get definitely increases the likelihood that they will stay here, for sure.
Right. So it, it, in our, if we keep that clean and we improve it, it could benefit the whole city in terms of revenues, sales tax revenues and TOT revenues, et cetera.
Correct.
Okay, so, well, that's all my questions. I want to echo what Councilmember Ford said. I, I'm really thankful to those citizens that went out and are floating the initiative. I think that could potentially be a huge shot in the arm, pun intended, for the Harvard Department. And provide them with a huge increase in capital to begin to fund an eroding infrastructure that's only going to get worse over time. So thank you. Those are my summary comments and questions. I don't see any other hands, so I'm going to go to public comment. Public comment is now open for item three on the agenda. This is not general public comment, just relating to the item tonight, item three. And Highland, do we have any public comments, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have no public comment for this item.
Okay, I will close public comment, bring it back to us. And this is a receive and file. And unless there are any other comments. Looking for any hands? Seeing none. I want to thank staff for their comprehensive presentation, a lot of information shared tonight. We appreciate it as a council greatly. You've opened eyes with regard to our needs in the future and certainly worthy of noting that this will be available and repeated for our community on Channel 20. And hopefully we can share with our networks the availability of this information because it's important for, for the future in our citizens. So thank you all tonight. Thank you again, Mr. Collins, council, and with. So thank you all tonight. Thank you again, Mr. Collins, council. And with that, we are adjourned. The next meeting of the Morro Bay City Council is, oh gosh, I need to pull out my, help me, Scott.
Oh, June 14th, and I believe, Councilmember Barton has raised her hand, Mayor, just wanted to...
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Barton, yes.
I just had one thing to say. After listening to all of this, I hope this isn't something that's just going to be received and filed. This is something that needs action and, and so that, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Yeah, that's for tonight only, but you're absolutely correct. And we'll be looking forward to hopefully evaluating some changes that could impact and improve Eric's life and our job.
Thank you all for your support.
You bet. Again, thank you. And you said the 14th, Scott, I'm sorry.
I'm going with that, June 14th, 5:30 PM.
Tuesday, June 14th?
I like that date.
Good. We, we do have an extra Tuesday off, so it'll be three weeks. And so have a pleasant holiday weekend and we will see you at 5:30 PM. We'll be announcing locale. We may not be on Zoom. We may be live, but we'll make sure we get that notice out ahead of time. Thank you for the privilege of your time. Have a great evening and we will see you all soon.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks a lot. Great reporting.
Thank you.